Good evening, everyone. It is Wednesday, February 19th, 2025. It is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Mr. Tifano?
Mr. Zeichner?
Here.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notes provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 25th, 2024, February 7th, 2025, and February 11th, 2025 at all schools on the district website, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of New Jersey. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our closed session resolution, whereas the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed in Section 12b of the act, and whereas the board hereby declares that its decision of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed pending or anticipating litigation matters covered by attorney-client privilege, matters involving employees in terms of their employment, have investigation involving students. Be it further resolved that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist, action may be taken on any of the items stated above. Is there a motion? Motion? Second. All those in favor? Aye. The board will return in approximately one hour, around 7:15.
Ladies and gentlemen, also in executive session.
Okay, we are back from closed session. There is no action being taken, so we are moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of minutes. The first approval is for our Public Board of Education Meeting Minutes, January 15th, 2025.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Zeichner, second by Ms. DePaine. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions or recusals? Okay, seeing none, then the next one is our closed session meeting minutes for January 15th, 2025. Is there a motion? Motion. Second. Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. DePaine. Any questions? Any abstentions or recusals? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members Report. Welcome back, ladies.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Hope you all are staying warm. So, we'll start off with Barclay Brook's updates. Barclay Brook Elementary School celebrated the 100th Day of School with a School-Wide Spirit Week culminating with the 100th Day of School, which is on Tuesday, February 18th. On the 100th Day of School, they were invited to dress as if they were 100 years old or wear a themed shirt. Barclay Brook's SEL Committee organized a Valentine's Day car drive for the residents at Monroe's local assisted living facilities with the hope that this small act of kindness would spread love, support, and compassion to many members of this community. Students colored pictures and wrote heartfelt notes to the residents. Barclay Brook collected hundreds of Valentines, and they were able to distribute them to four assisted living facilities in their community.
Brookside conducted their school-wide spelling bee on January 28th. The winner for the spelling bee was Yashanand from Mrs. DeCarlo's 5th grade class. Congratulations. From the Student Council, the 100 Days Theme Day was held from February 10th to February 18th, and the 100th Day was on February 18th. The Student Council organized a Coin Wars fundraiser for the California wildfires. We raised over $2,300. Thank you to the students involved. The students earned a variety of awards this month for displaying great character, which included board games with Mr. Siddler, podcasts and audiobooks with Mrs. Lynn, guitar with Mr. Akam Bato, and soccer with Mrs. Sissine. Parent-teacher conferences will be held on February 19th and February 20th, with evening conferences being held on February 20th.
Next up is Mill Lake Elementary School. February has been a busy and exciting month at Mill Lake. Mill Lake kicked off the month with their 1,000-box Domino cereal box challenge on Valentine's Day, and it was a huge success. Students and staff worked together to build an incredible Domino chain before donating the cereal boxes to the Monroe Food Pantry, local churches, and senior centers, spreading kindness and generosity throughout their community. Adding to the spirit of giving, Mill Lake's 3rd grade Student Council led a Super Bowl collection in the days leading up to the Super Bowl, gathering much-needed donations for the Monroe Food Pantry. Their hard work and dedication made a real impact. The month also featured the exciting PTO Book Fair from February 4th to 6th, where Mill Lake readers eagerly selected new books to enjoy. The event also included a special Woodland-Mill Lake Family Night, bringing families together to celebrate the joy of reading. During the week of February 4th, Mill Lake welcomed dental professionals for educational visits, teaching students the importance of oral hygiene through engaging and interactive lessons. In honor of President's Day, students participated in a variety of educational activities that highlighted the achievements and legacies of past U.S. presidents. These lessons helped deepen their understanding of history and leadership. On February 18th, Mill Lake celebrated a major milestone, the 100th Day of School. Students and staff took part in fun and creative activities, making the day both memorable and meaningful. Throughout the month, Mill Lake's SEL Social-Emotional Learning Committee focus has been kindness, and Mill Lakers have truly embodied this theme. Mill Lake is excited to highlight and celebrate acts of kindness during the upcoming monthly assembly, reinforcing the importance of compassion and community spirit. This week, they are hosting their winter conferences, providing a valuable opportunity for teachers and parents to collaborate in support of student success. Next month, the school is gearing up for Read Across America with the theme March Mystery Madness. The excitement begins on March 4th, when the school's genre study starts, featuring special guest readers from the community and from district leadership. A highlight of the celebration will be a visit from renowned author David A. Adler, best known for his Cam Jansen book series. Festivities are capped off with the beloved Annual Night of Reading on March 13th. They can't wait for another month filled with learning, literacy, and school spirit. Stay tuned for more updates and exciting events at Mill Lake.
And now we're moving on to Woodland Elementary School. Woodland School has had its script spelling bee. Families of the classroom winners were invited to attend as well. The school winner overall was Rajdi Tsaha. The SEL Character Goal Assembly of Friendship was held, and top winners were treated to a free snack in the cafeteria. In partnership with the Monroe Township High School, Woodland Unified Students participated in a unified event. The PTO held a book fair for Woodland students and a family night with Mill Lake families. Mrs. Herman and Ms. Fleming coordinated a Wounded Warriors Assembly as well.
Next up is Oak Tree Elementary School. Oak Tree students raised over $16,000 as part of their Kids' Heart Challenge to support the American Heart Association, and they celebrated with a dance party during the monthly pep rally. Grade 3 students and their parents attended the annual Hour of Code Night on February 6th. Local dentists visited Oak Tree classes as part of Dental Health Month, teaching ways to care for students' teeth and proper brushing. Grade 2 students participated in the Second and Seventh Program. High school athletes visited the classes and read to them. Oak Tree's PTA is hosting a Sweetheart Dance on February 22nd, and Unified Paint Night will take place on February 26th.
And now we'll move on to Apple Garth Elementary School. Throughout Apple Garth, classes worked on Valentines for veterans during the month of February. And Apple Garth has also hosted a Career Fair on February 4th. Several members from the school community volunteer their time discussing working fields such as law, public health, artificial intelligence, and entrepreneurship. Thank you to the community members and participating students. The PTA is sponsoring a February Frenzy. Classes compete in activities such as Sports Jersey Day, Wear Red Day, Hat Day, and Pyjama Day to win prizes while helping to fund school activities. This Kids for Heart Challenge concluded on February 13th. Classes participated in heart-healthy activities in the gym after raising thousands of dollars for a worthy cause. Parent-teacher conferences will be held at Apple Garth on Wednesday, February 20th, Thursday, February 21st. The remainder of this week will be early dismissal for students as well. Our PTA is hosting a Sweetheart Formal on Saturday, February 22nd. Come out for a fun evening. Apple Garth and Oak Tree are hosting a Unified Paint Night on Wednesday, February 26th at Oak Tree School. Sophomores from Monroe Township High School, former Apple Garth students, have been presenting a public speaking class to current Apple Garth students on Tuesday afternoons after school. The high schoolers are teaching the students about impromptu speaking, how to appear confident, answering questions with poise at job interviews, and many other valuable skills. Another high schooler is sponsoring a recycling program at Apple Garth during February and March. The class that collects the most batteries for recycling will win a pizza party.
Next up is Monroe Township Middle School. Congratulations to the MTMS math team for placing third in the Math Counts Competition on February 1st. The two top scorers were Akil Venkat and Kian Vesnov. February 21st, MTMS will hold its 7th-grade Winter Whiteout Dance. They are looking forward to seeing the 7th graders have a great time in a more social environment. February 10th through the 14th, the middle school held its annual Week of Optimism. This week celebrated the life of Om Perik and his contributions to the middle school. They promote kindness, optimism, and culminate the week with a Day of Optimism on Friday the 14th, where Om's family visits the school to see the efforts made on Om's behalf. On March 6th and 7th, MTMS will hold its American Heart Association's American Heart Challenge. The goals of the challenge are multifaceted, including being prepared to save a life by learning hands-only CPR, learning how to take care of their heart and brain, and raising funds to help kids born with special hearts. On February 18th, the middle school held its annual Honor Society Induction Ceremony. Parents of 7th and 8th graders celebrated with the middle school as they watched their children inducted into the Honor Society. Everyone at the middle school, like their parents, are very proud of them. Congratulations to the January Students of the Month for the middle school. In 6th grade, Elijah Zachary; in 7th grade, Sahana Ramesh; and in 8th grade, Noah McAuliffe.
And now finally, we're moving on to the Monroe Township's High School. Many important sports accomplishments have happened this month for the students. The wrestling team won their first-ever state sectional title in Monroe Township history, defeating the favorite Old Bridge High School 34-31. The ice hockey team has also defeated Old Bridge, coming back from two goals down to win their second Colodee Cup, the GMC Championship, in a row. Evangelina Francisco has led her team to a GMC tournament win, becoming Monroe Township High School's all-time leading scorer in girls' basketball history. Steven Barbera won the state sectionals in a 3,200-meter race for indoor track, running a personal best time as well. Steven's time is considered elite and a gold standard by Mile Split U.S. Congratulations to all of these amazing athletes and their accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, as always, for your comprehensive report. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from ESIP. It's for the Energy Savings Improvement Plan. Last month, we had begun talking about this, and we, as a board, said that we would like to have them come and give the presentation to the public. So we do have representatives from Honeywell that are here, and we also have our Bond Council present. So I'm going to hand it over to you, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to present to all of you, the board and the public, about the great project that we feel we put together for Monroe's schools and under the ESIP program, which is the Energy Savings Improvement Program, which we will talk a little bit about as we go through this. So appreciate the opportunity to be here. First of all, my name is Sean Yates. I'm a sales leader for Honeywell. Been working in the state of New Jersey for some time with my team over here, conducting similar projects to this within school districts all through New Jersey. So, here we go. Okay, so in terms of the program that we're working under, we're working under the Energy Savings Improvement Program, which is legislation that was passed back in 2012 by the state of New Jersey. The program itself is, as I said, put together by the state, and it's administered by the Board of Public Utilities in New Jersey. So that's the Department of the Government, and we work with them in the development of these projects to make sure we're going through a solid process, and they actually have some checks and balances throughout it. The legislation itself was originally implemented within the state of New Jersey in order to help public entities to implement energy conservation projects with no taxpayer impact. And that's because the energy savings themselves are used to pay for the project over time. So in terms of how the project works and how the funding is set up, you can see here on the slide. So if we walk into a building such as, or a district such as Monroe School District, the first thing that we do is we look at and assess your profile from a cost perspective. So that's before the improvements that you see on the left-hand side of the screen here. We determined that the costs associated with utilities in the Monroe School District was about $2 million. After going through and identifying opportunities to improve the buildings and improve the efficiency, as well as the classrooms, the educational facilities, et cetera, we were able to identify ways to reduce the costs within the buildings, reduce the utility costs by $800,000. And in doing so, we're actually improving, at the same time, improving the facilities for the students and staff and improving the educational environment. So some of the benefits of this program are, first of all, the fact that there's no upfront costs associated with an ESIP program. So we do all the work to develop the project on our own upfront. We then go forward, and we can actually identify and leverage any available utility rebates that we might be able to find within the state of New Jersey. And there's also no debt limit impact, because we're actually using the budget that you're spending today. So the key takeaway from this slide is if you look at the fact that the pie doesn't change size, right? The budget that you have today is shown on the left-hand side before improvements is the same size as the budget that you have after the improvements on the right-hand side. The difference is, instead of sending the $2 million to the utility company, now you send $1.2 million to the utility company and $800,000 to the financier or funding entity in order to refund that payment. As far as the implementation of the project, Honeywell actually does the implementation ourselves, so we're responsible for developing, designing, implementing, overseeing the project. So the project is our responsibility from the very beginning to the very end, working in partnership with the board and the school district in order to ensure that we're achieving their goals. At the end of the project, we do offer a guarantee, so that the board has the option to take that guarantee. That's always available and required under the ESIP legislation. So in terms of utility incentives within this project that we put together for the Monroe School Township project, what we're able to identify is over $600,000 worth of utility incentives. So that $600,000 is helping to offset the cost of the project for the school district. In terms of the process, as I mentioned earlier, we have to go through this ESIP process, and it's actually overseen by the Board of Public Utilities. There's a very rigid structure to it, to make sure that we're doing, there's checks and balances throughout. First thing that we have to do is, after we develop all of our energy savings calculations and what we call an energy savings plan that details out how we're actually going to improve the facilities and generate these energy savings, we have to submit that to a third-party engineer. The third-party engineer then takes that information, and they actually will ultimately go through all of our calculations, make sure that they're all done in accordance with the standards that have been set by the state, and that they agree with the fact that we will actually generate the savings that we're projecting. So we did go through that process, and we were successful in gaining their approval. Once that's complete, we have to take both that review that was done by the third-party engineers. Once that's complete, we take the review that was done by the third-party engineer, and we put that together with the energy savings plan, and we submit that to the Board of Public Utilities, and the Board of Public Utilities at the state actually reviews all that information, and then they approve the plan. And they've done that as well. You can see, actually, the approval email is in the upper right here. As far as the scope of work goes, so this is a great project that we've developed. We really feel, you know, very proud of the fact that we can implement this with no cost to the taxpayers. And ultimately, these are the different energy conservation measures that we've identified and worked in conjunction with the school district to select to move forward on. So those projects include district-wide lighting. So there will be new lighting both in the classrooms, exterior to the building, throughout the entire district. We're looking to upgrade the control systems and the building management systems within the high school, the middle school, administration building, as well as transportation building. And that's obsolete, there's obsolete equipment there today, so we'll be replacing that, upgrading, and implementing new control strategies for efficiency. We'll be replacing boilers in the middle school and Barclay Brook. And then in terms of building envelope, the idea of building envelope is essentially insulation. What we want to do is we want to actually seal the building so the outside air can't get to the buildings, and in doing so, it makes the buildings more comfortable, reduces drafts, and it helps to improve the educational environment in general, as well as save energy. So we'll be doing that throughout the district. From an HVAC perspective, so the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning equipment within the district, a handful of it will be replaced through this process. You can see, it will be replaced, we'll be replacing rooftop units at the TV studio. We'll be replacing two air handling units at the lecture hall, a kitchen air handling unit in the middle school, home ec air handling unit in the middle school, and then a couple of rooms, you can see there, Room 100, will have a couple of units replaced in the middle school as well. From a chiller perspective, so this is the equipment that actually cools the buildings and helps to produce air conditioning within the facilities, we'll be replacing the chillers in both Woodland and Barclay Brook. And then finally, solar. So the solar aspect of this project is a power purchase agreement that we helped to facilitate, and that power purchase agreement will actually ensure that the district gets a lower rate for their utilities than they're paying today. And it will also implement solar in all the schools that you see here. So Apple Garth, Barclay, Middle, Oak Tree, Woodland, as well as transportation and admin building, and there'll be a canopy solar system at the high school. So the solar not only reduces, obviously, it's renewable, so reducing your greenhouse gas production, but at the same time, it's saving money, because you get a better utility rate than what you're spending today with your utility in the local area. From a financial perspective, you can see the financials of the project laid out here. Key takeaway here is capital contribution is zero. The project itself is $12.1 million. Over the term of the project, we are projecting that it will generate $14.1 billion in energy savings. We're looking at a solar, I'm sorry, utility rebate incentive of $664,000 to help offset costs. And the solar that I just spoke of, that will actually save $4.6 million over the course of the term, so the 15-year term, based upon a reduced utility rate. There is positive cash flow in the project, and there is an optional energy guarantee, as I had mentioned earlier. Where we're at in the process today and the schedule moving forward, so today, we are currently in, we just finished Phase 1, which is development of the project. We are starting Phase 2, which is essentially secure funding and then move forward with design. We'll then be moving into Phase 3, which will be the bidding and securing of all the work. That will complete in January, or I'm sorry, June of 2025. And then we're looking at about an 18-month construction cycle from June through November of '26. And then we move on to the ongoing measurement and verification guarantee period, if you so choose. We really appreciate the opportunity to work with the board, the school district, the administration, and everyone who put this project together. We feel that it'll have a great impact for all of the students and staff within the community, as well as the board, and obviously help the taxpayers as well. Appreciate the opportunity to present. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I also do want to thank Mr. Tag for being here tonight. We appreciate your presence also. And I want to start off with the board. Does the board have any questions that they would like to ask at this point? Otherwise, we're going to open it up to the public. Ms. Ratner?
Yes, thank you. I just had two questions. I guess I'll direct it this way. So my first question is regarding the rebates and incentives. So from what I understand, those are the rebates and incentives that are available as of today. Is there any situation where these incentives and rebates are no longer available while we move through the project? And I guess, in a positive manner, would there be a potential chance that there would be additional opportunities for those?
Sure. This is working. Okay. Yeah, so as far as the rebates go, they are actually, the rebates are from the utility company. They are renewed on an annual basis. These are programs that have been around for many, many years. So could they change? Yes, we certainly don't expect them to change, though. And there's actually more opportunity that we're looking at as we're going through this process, so that there's some grants that are potentially out there, as well as there's a lot of changes happening to the rebate program right now, and there's potential to bring forward something called Direct Install, which is another opportunity to save costs and to get, help to expedite work and offset some of those costs. So as we go through the project, what we have today, you know, the project, the scope that we've put together, that's kind of locked in, but certainly, we are always looking for, as Honeywell, we're always looking for opportunities to help our customers to get more done within their districts and to help offset more costs, so that'll be something we'll continue to look for.
Thank you. And then I just had one, just quick follow-up regarding the guarantee. I know we've spoken about it as our committee and then as the full board, but because we are having the hearing for the public today, I was hoping you could just explain a little bit more so the, you know, the public can understand what the guarantee is, you know, on the presentation, and like, how it would kick in, how wouldn't it kick in until a certain threshold and things of that nature?
Sure. So I'll do my best to explain high level, and then I might turn it over to my team to get into the details. So as far as the guarantee goes, so what we guarantee is we guarantee energy consumption. So what we do is we look at your actual consumption today, and then we establish a baseline, and then we basically, so then we do our implementations, and then we look at the consumption at that point, and we compare it against the baseline, so that we can compare the two. If there, if we do not actually generate the savings of consumption that we had projected, then we will pay you for that differential based upon the rate that's identified today. Because we have to kind of, we have to lock everything in at one point in time, so we lock everything in based upon today's structure, and then we basically pay the difference. If we happen to, so if we do happen to have a shortfall, which happens, it's unusual, right? Very unusual, and if there is a shortfall, it's generally very, honestly, very insignificant in the grand scheme of things. But if we do, we would then also have the opportunity to come in and make further improvements to get you up to the level of savings that we had guaranteed. So that's kind of the two remedies, is either we pay you, or we come in and we do further improvements to get you to the level that we had guaranteed. But it is actually, you know, consumption is what we look at. So, I don't know, anybody wants to add anything to that?
That was good.
Okay. Hopefully that answers.
Thank you. Mr. Piero?
The guarantee, has there been, could you tell us how many times you had to pay the guarantee out?
So, I mean, we've been doing performance contracting, as it's referred to nationally and globally, really. We've been doing this type of work since like, the mid-'80s. So in reality, I can't tell you like, exactly how many times we've had payouts. I will tell you it's happened, and we have a running tab within our business that accounts for these things. But it's generally, over the, I guess that's what, 40 years of doing this, I think we run in like, the, I'll use a wide range, because I'm not exactly sure, but it's like 2% to 5% is, you know, where we would ever have a payout, in that range. So it's generally very low payouts when they do occur, because, you know, ultimately, there's different ways to look at it. Some of it is you got to look at your breakdown of energy savings, where the energy savings are coming from, because some energy conservation measures are going to be less risky than others, right? So you kind of balance all of that when you should be considering the guarantee in itself, to see how much risk there is in actually producing the savings. I mean, for instance, a lighting upgrade, the lighting is generally low risk, is the reality of it, right? Because it's a known quantity, for the most part. So if you look at things from that perspective, it should help you gauge the risk level that you're at.
Okay. Thank you. Sure.
Any other questions?
Just one.
Um, I just, I just one.
Go ahead.
How many projects of this nature have you been implementing on Honeywell? Have done?
So, so he's whispering next to me, 50-plus New Jersey. I mean, I will tell you that, you know, I work globally for Honeywell. We do, we've done, we talk about the fact that we've done over 6,000 projects. What we've been doing is for 40 years. So we've done a lot, 50 in the state of New Jersey since the legislation was available, which is like 2012.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so then the next portion of this is the public hearing on the bond ordinance. So I'm going to open this up to the public, if anybody would like to come up to speak on the bond ordinance. Just. Talk about the bond itself, would you?
Would you like me to?
Sure, please.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jackie Sheen, is from McCarteran English on bond counsel. Is it, is that better?
Okay.
I'm Jackie Sheen, is from McCarteran English on bond counsel to the Board of Education. In January, the board introduced their bond ordinance. And what that bond ordinance did was it authorizes the issuance of up to $13.5 million of bonds to finance upfront the cost of the energy savings improvement. By law, they have to hold a public hearing, which is being held tonight, and they had to go for approval to the local finance board of the state of New Jersey, which is a public entity that looks at the financing and the terms of the financing to grant approval before they can finally adopt the bond ordinance. So right now, they're going to do a, the public hearing on the bond ordinance, and subsequent to that hearing, they will do a final adoption by vote of the bond ordinance. After that, and I'll sort of give you a little upfront, so. There's a resolution on the agenda tonight which authorizes the sale of the bonds, which we expect to take place in March, subject to market conditions. And Anthony Inverso is here from the FA for the board, who can talk more in terms of the financial ramifications of the bond issue. But as you heard from Honeywell, the way this has been set up in the state of New Jersey is the energy savings are set up so that they are verified to be able to pay the cost of the bond over the life of the bond issue. I'm happy to answer questions from the board, or the public, or however, Madam President.
Thank you. Do any, any board members have questions, Ms. Ratner?
And I just wanted to clarify, as far as the bond usage. We only are responsible for bonds if the certain projects are completed. So if it's up to the amount, it's not necessarily that we are required to take the full $13.5.
Correct. We authorize a larger amount as a precaution because we have to go and get the state approvals. I think we're estimating that you'll probably need, what was it, $12.3 million?
About, about $12.3 million right now.
But that will get finalized with the market when we sell the bonds.
Right, so that extra million plus of authorization will go away, you know, because it's not being used. So you'll only be obligated to pay what we need to finance the projects, which we're estimating is around $12.3 million now. Now, that could change, but it's not going to go from $12.3 million to $13 million. It's probably going to be, you know, plus or minus $100,000, somewhere in that range.
Are there any other board members with questions? Okay, so I would like to open it up to the public. If anybody has questions regarding the bond ordinance or ESIP, while we have all of our representatives here, please come up to the microphone. You'll have four minutes, and please state your name and municipality for the record.
And just to be clear, this is the bond hearing, public bond hearing?
It started off as being also for the technical portion.
And now we're into the bond portion?
So there is no public hearing on the technical portion?
There's a required public hearing on the bond.
I heard you.
But we will, we will hear.
Answer my question.
Excuse me, sir, we will hear you on anything that you want to discuss related to the ESIP or the bond. You don't have to be confrontational.
Thought you were. You said that the buildings would be sealed. What is the, what is the makeup air in these sealed buildings?
I'll ask our engineering team to address that question.
So your, your, it should be, I got a real question. Your makeup air is going to come in from where it normally comes in. That's your air handling units, your ventilator units in the classrooms. So you're really not, any makeup air that's coming into the building that's supposed to be there is not going to be touched, okay? And that's the air that you're actually conditioning. We're more concerned about the air that's leaking in from basically roof wall joints, basically where steel meets mortar. That's where the sealing will occur. But as far as the proper amount of makeup air for students for education, that will not be touched.
That was what?
That, that air will not be touched. Makeup air will basically be what was required for educational purposes.
Okay. What is the life expectancy of the equipment? If the project's over 23 years, and you're putting in some new equipment, is the equipment's going to last as long as the bond period?
Yeah, so there is, as part of the ESIP process, there's actually a evaluation that occurs related to the useful life of the equipment. And it's a weighted average that is used in order to determine that, and that is less than the 20-year period of the bond. So the useful life weighted, the weighted average of the useful life of all the equipment that is being installed is less than the 20-year bond.
No, it's the, it's the opposite. By law, the equipment's average useful life will extend past the life of the bond issue.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So which?
So it's longer than the 20 years.
Right, so the analysis was done, because as Jackie mentioned, by law, we cannot issue bonds greater than the weighted average useful life of the projects being financed. So our bond issue extends for a total of 21 years. The, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, but I think it was around 25 years was that weighted average term of the projects. So we have to, it has to be certified that we are issuing the debt for a period less than the weighted average useful life.
What is the estimated rate? What I'm looking to find out is what is going to be the overall cost. If we're buying $12.3 million, what, how much are we going to repay over the period of the bond?
I can answer that. We're estimating an interest rate of 4%. And we think it's going to be, you know, ultimately when we sell the debt, it'll be less than 4%. But that's been what we've been using for the estimates at this point. And that, once again, is, you know, the $12.3 million would be issued at that interest rate for that 21-year term.
Okay, so the overall cost is, how much are we going to repay in the 21 years?
We're estimating about, we'll call it $7 million of interest over that term. So, you know, 19, you know, $19 million, you know, $19.3 million in total, which is less than the projected energy savings.
Okay, so we're going to borrow $21 million and we're going to pay back 19?
No, 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 you're borrowing $12.3 million, and the interest on that $12.3 million is about $7 million.
Okay.
So you're paying back over that period of time, you know, the total of those two numbers.
All right, thank you.
Show Arminio Monroe Township. So what I didn't see in some of the repairs was Applegarth furnace, Applegarth boiler. That, we've been talking about that for a long time as a very important project. How come that is not included in this?
Mr. Tagg?
Yes, Applegarth School is being handled independently. We received a ROD grant for that.
Okay, so that's going forward.
Yes, the entire HVAC system, as well as all the roofs at Applegarth are being addressed.
Thank you. Could you explain how there's no cost to the taxpayers if we're running the bond? And if it's a $7 million of interest over the course of the loan? So when will, so the board is going to issue the bond. When does that interest begin to accrue, and when do we start paying it back? After the project?
Those are all great questions, questions that I'll gladly take. So the timeline is that we expect to issue the bonds on or about March 19th, okay? So, you know, middle to the end of March. Your first interest payment on those bonds would be September of 2025. However, we are structuring what's called capitalized interest with the bonds. So the bond proceeds will pay interest for the first year. So that's September, and March 2026, interest payments will be paid by the bond. So there's no obligation out of the school's budget.
So I'm going to interrupt you because my time is limited.
Yep, sure.
So we're going to get the money, and we're going to start paying interest from that money, from that principal that we're borrowing.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and so, but during that time, you will be receiving energy savings from the projects, as was mentioned, you know, lighting is some of the first things that we understand will be done, and those will be generating savings. So those savings will come to the school district because they're not needed for the bond payments initially. And then from there, you're paying the principal and interest on the bonds over that 21-year period, as we mentioned, so through March of 2046. And you'll be receiving energy savings that are estimated to total about $19.8 million. And then, as I mentioned to the previous gentleman, in total, there's about 19 point, we'll call it 19.3 million of obligations on the bonds. But then we net out that capitalized interest, which is about $570,000. So you're about 18.8.
I'm going to ask the, since this is a $14 million bond, I'm going to ask for a little extra time so the public can understand this. So can I, can, Madam President, can you ask our finance person to explain, are we budgeting for this, for this year and over the next years? I mean, for, I know it's the bond, and we're going to just solely use the bond money to finance everything, and we're not rebudgeting anything, can?
Sure, but Ms. Allen?
Yeah, so, so when we start paying off the principal and interest on the loan, we will be realizing savings in the utilities line items. So those savings will be basically applied to the debt. So it's going to be a wash.
What are we anticipating those savings to be?
So every year, there's a chart that.
Because you're counting on it being a wash.
Yes, there's a chart, so every year, it has been determined how much the savings will be, how much the debt will be, and how much the utility savings will be. And we will, we have to guarantee that the savings will be higher than the debt. So we, we have, I want to say $36,000 maybe extra on top of that every year?
Right, that's correct. That, this project, you know, with the estimated savings, projected savings from the energy projects will be more than enough to pay the debt service. And there would be about $35,000, $35,000 to $40,000 of excess savings each year above and beyond the debt payments.
So we can hold everybody to that, right? Everybody's agreeing that that's going to happen? And I would just like to ask, to narrow the focus of the question about Honeywell doing the project. I would ask that, how many payouts in New Jersey in the last five years has Honeywell paid out in their projects?
On the guarantee?
Yeah.
So the answer is none.
Okay, that sounds good. And I know you did a project for Old Bridge, I believe. How's that going? Are they reaping benefits? Are they coming, like, is it the promise coming forward?
So the Old Bridge project, I was the project manager, my name's Tim. I think we finished it in 2019, 2020. They had, yeah, they had a good project, the savings was, I think, in excess of what we projected. That was also the time when we were able to get them increased incentives.
Any numbers, can you give us fact, hard numbers?
I don't, I don't have numbers. I think it was a $15 million project, roughly.
And they reaped how much?
Roughly similar, you know, similar to this size project. I couldn't tell you the energy savings off the top of my head, but it was about a $15 million project.
So one last question, thank you for your indulgence. So through the life of the project, we're not, so we don't have to pay this bond back for 23 years? Is that what?
The bond will extend 21 years in total.
Okay, so, but are we anticipating reaping the benefits of this whole project and paying that back sooner? Is that how that works, or do we just hold the bond money out? Because I know in the past, when we had construction, business administrators have used the money in the bonds to pay interest rates and stuff.
I understand, yeah, so you're not going to pay out all $12.3 million on day one. So yes, the money will be utilized over time. So you will be able to earn interest off of that money. You will start paying back the bond in March of 2027 will be the first principal payment. And then you pay annual principal through the life of the issue, so you start paying it down. So hopefully that answered your question.
Okay, I just think it's a, it's a big debt to have on top of probably, I think, what do we have? Still $100 million in debt from previous bonds?
About 90, yeah.
Close.
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Pretty close.
Very, very close.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to come up to speak about the bond ordinance or ESIP? Have any questions? Okay, then we, oh, oh, sorry. Do I still have to state my name? I can't remember.
Name and municipality.
Okay, Rocheneesham Monroe Township. So first of all, just wanted to thank you all for looking into like an energy-saving initiative. I think it's great that you guys are doing this. I think you guys are putting a lot of energy into it, so it is appreciated. I did have a couple of questions. I've watched a couple of the BG and T meetings and just a couple of things, so. One, in terms of like the total bond amount, right? Are we paying Honeywell like a separate fee, or is that inclusive of the bond amount, right? So that's one question. And then, is there a possibility for us to do this in-house versus hiring Honeywell? That's another question I had. And the reason I bring that up is, like, I'm someone in my career, I hire a ton of consultants. I've hired consultants for $500,000 projects to like $20 million projects. And what I found is, you hire a consultant, they do the work, they go away. And it's just hard to manage it. When questions come in, you have to go through the consultant, ask them the question, get the answer back, right? Versus if someone internally is managing it, I think it could be a lot more beneficial. So that was another question I had. Should I pause?
It's up to you if you want to ask all of your questions, and then we can ask them when you're done.
So I'll just, if it's okay, I'll just pause and see if you have the answer, yeah.
So your first question, Ms. Allen, can you just repeat your first question again?
Just, if we're paying Honeywell like a separate consultant fee in addition to the bond amount that's being taken out?
No, everything's included, it's all inclusive in there.
In that amount?
Yes.
Okay, and then just doing it in-house versus, like, using in-house resources versus hiring Honeywell to do something like that? Is that something that's an option, or something that was considered or looked into? Mr. Tagg?
Some of the components of it could be done in-house over time. We don't have dedicated staff to do this. Over the last several years, we have taken on many of these lighting projects ourselves. The projects such as the boilers, the chillers, et cetera, no, they cannot be done in-house. They would have to be done as capital projects.
Yeah, the only thing I would ask is, you just have more control over it, right? When it's in-house versus when you're hiring someone external, or when the community has questions, you have a direct line into them. So that's something I would just ask you guys to consider for whatever could be in-house, if you guys would consider that. And then the other question I had, I was reading a lot about like a potential guarantee, right? So are we going to do that guarantee? Is that something that we're going to make sure that we include as part of the total bond amount? I feel like that's really important. Like, why are we spending all this money if it's not going to be guaranteed? I just feel like that's something that's really important that we consider. So that's another question of mine.
Yeah, that's something that we as a board will discuss after the hearing is over. I do have a resolution, if needed, if the board feels like it would like to go in that direction.
Okay, so that's something that might be decided tonight? Okay, great. And then the last thing is, I heard something about. And then the last thing is, I heard something about like a solar program and us potentially looking into a solar program. Is that something, I, I read something about like leasing space and them leasing space from us versus like, for example, us owning the solar, right? And I know there's big differences between the two. I was just wondering if someone could explain that program in terms of what we're looking into and just what the ramifications would be of that.
Sure, I can take that. So, what the district is currently looking at is a power purchase agreement. So that's where essentially there is a, a third party that leases the, the space from, from the school district and then they install solar there. And then they sell that, that power back to, to the school district. The benefit especially for, for a school district, there's, there's been some changes recently with, with the Inflation Reduction Act that, that affect this, but in general. Historically, school districts have signed up for power purchase agreements because they have not really been the beneficiary of tax incentives. And those tax incentives can be realized by a, a private entity. Now, I will, you know, say that as of right now, within the Inflation Reduction Act, a public entity can actually get a tax rebate. We don't know if that's going to be, continue to be the case, but that is the case today, okay? But the challenges, the other challenges associated with it is just essentially, they have to maintain the, the, the equipment, make sure it's operating all the time, so there'd be a maintenance cost associated with it, making sure that you have the power because essentially right now, the way that it works is the power purchase agreement provider is incentivized to keep the system running because they're selling you the power, right? So, they're going to want to keep that system up and running 24 hours a day. They take care of all of that and they give a very good rate to, to the district because they're able to realize a lot of the tax incentives. And they have, you know, partners that have tax appetite and they can benefit from all that financially. So, they can give a really competitive rate and ultimately the district says, I'm not responsible for this, somebody else has to maintain it and take care of it. So we've found it's been the best situation for, for public entities. We have looked at it in the, in the other aspect as well in terms of, of ownership and we did a lot of analysis here. And ultimately, it worked out that it's better financially for the district to do a power purchase agreement. So that was what the, the recommendation was.
Yeah, thank you. That was my other question. Like, did you model out what it looks like when we own it? And then did you model out what it looks like if we're just leasing the, leasing it back? I mean, I own, I have solar panels in my own house and I know it's different than having it in a school district, but there is very little maintenance. So, I hear what you're saying, I just think like over the long term, I think it's just more beneficial to, to own versus just lease it back. And especially if you model it out, right? I, I think you're, you're better off financially if you do that. So that's the only thing I, you know, had a question on.
Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Could, for Ms. Shaw, could we just explain to her, I believe the insurance like to guarantee is it costs us, I believe, 30,000 a year for the guarantee? But we only recoup that money if they're under like the $30,000 savings. And when we asked about the other districts, they said that some of the districts in our surrounding area had taken a guarantee, yet every district had met the needs. So it's kind of, we're trying to figure out where we stand. Do you spend the 30,000 a year? And then, if we meet our expectations or if we're 23,000 below, we still cost us 30,000? So, that's what we're trying to figure out, where we need to be.
I, I totally hear you. The way I think about it is it's a hedge, right? Where, where hedging and saying, you know, let's pay the 30,000 and see if we get it. I think if we're spending all of this money, I feel like the hedge is necessary. The only other question I have is, you know, I know we were told by Honeywell that that was the case, did we confirm that with other districts that that was the case? Like, did we actually talk to the other districts that have used Honeywell to make sure that that was the case? I just think that's important, right? I just think it's important that we do our due diligence when we're making such a big financial decision, that's all.
I also just wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Piero said, and I, I know you said you watched the meetings, I kind of asked almost the same questions that you had about solar and everything. But with the guarantee, from my understanding, it wasn't the same amount that we're spending. It was, the threshold was above that. So, like, the guarantee is 36,000, but we would have to, it was something like 40,000 or, like, it was more than that. So, there was the chance where even if we didn't necessarily realize that savings, it would have to be more that we spent above the amount that we'd be spending on the guarantee.
Above the guarantee.
Yeah, so I just want, I don't know if I explained that correctly.
So it could be more than the 30,000, is your point?
Well, we'd have to see, I guess, a cost that would be higher than what the total cost of the guarantee is in order for it to kick in, for us to get the guarantee, the back, the money back.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the case and it's just an exorbitant amount, I would just say we should confirm with other districts ourselves that they indeed did not have to, they did not take the guarantee and they, they were fine, they didn't need it, right? I just think that's important, that's all.
Thank you.
Just remember, the guarantee is annually, so it's just one year for that 30. The, the guarantee was an annual fee. So it's just that one year for the 36,000.
It's every year.
So each year.
So every year we'd have to, right, right. Understood, but when you're talking about, you know, 13 point, something million, it's kind of a drop in the bucket, no?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chrissy Skirby Monroe. I just, I know Ms. Shaw asked a question and I don't think she got an answer. How much is the district paying Honeywell for their services for this?
Nothing, correct? We are not paying Honeywell any money.
You make no money on this?
We're not, we.
There's no cost right now. Based into the contract, obviously there's a fee that Honeywell will be getting. What is that fee that will be going to Honeywell? They're not doing it for free, let's be real. What is there?
Okay, so, so there is, there is a, we call it a markup, a fee, and the services, for all the services we provide, which are the design, the development, the overseeing of the project, the installation, as well as just checking everything out at the end of the project to make sure everything works properly. So we take everything off of the district's plate essentially. We have project managers, Tim, who introduced himself earlier, is, is the project management leader. Catherine is, is our project manager that will be assigned to this project. So we have a cost associated with that and as well as the detailed design we put together. So we hire an engineer, the engineer designs the project so that we can put it out to public bid. We oversee that process. And all of that, when you wrap it all up, is about 28.8% on top of hard costs. So that's the way that the project is.
So roughly, could you give a dollar amount?
I honestly.
An estimate, I mean, I'm sure you know an estimated dollar amount.
I honestly don't, I could do the math.
Ms. Skirby, do you have any other questions while he's doing the math?
Yeah, again, for Mr. Yates, if he could explain that guarantee, because I, I understand it differently than I did at the previous meeting when it was explained. It sounded like it was explained that the guarantee is they're guaranteeing our usage of energy, not our savings of energy. Or maybe I heard it wrong.
I'm sorry, I was doing the calculations.
The guarantee, what exactly is the guarantee? I thought what you said was you were guaranteeing our consumption.
That's correct.
Not these savings.
So, so we guarantee the consumption which gets translated into a dollar value, into a monetary value. So we can't, we can't guarantee the, the dollars of savings because ultimately that's going to change what we, what we, that's going to escalate over time. So what we guarantee is, is your baseline of consumption today.
Because the last time they were talking about a $500,000 savings per year for the lighting.
Okay, so.
And then the guarantee would cost $30,000 to guarantee getting that 500,000. That's how it was talked about at the last meeting. I'm not sure if that's exactly accurate. So you would pay the $36,000 to guarantee that you got the $500,000 of savings.
It's the total, the guarantee covers the total energy savings. So wouldn't it just be the lighting savings? It'd be the lighting, lighting plus all the other energy conservation measures that are included in the project, so it would guarantee all of that.
So what exactly, could, could you go through what that, it guarantees? So it's the lighting, the, is it the boilers, the?
Yes, every, so, so it's everything, the scope of work that we talked about earlier, which is... So it's the lighting, it's the control system upgrade, it's the boiler plant, so the boilers that are replaced, it's the building envelopes and insulation of the buildings, the replacement of the HVAC equipment throughout the district. And then, and, and that's, so that's the guarantee piece of it.
What is not guaranteed?
The, so, the, the solar is not included within our guarantee. The solar rate is guaranteed by a power purchase agreement provider.
Will the board be entering into that agreement or will that be Honeywell?
The board.
The board will.
Correct.
Okay, so, as Ms. Shaw said too, I would recommend, my opinion, as a taxpayer here, that we do spend the 30, $36,000 on a guarantee because it is, obviously it's guaranteeing a lot of the project. Everything except solar, is that correct?
Yes, so the solar, again, yeah, the rate is guaranteed by the PPA provider.
So that's a huge, that's a huge dollar amount and it's a small amount to pay to have that guarantee. And I think you owe that to the taxpayers to ensure that they will get that, we will have that, that savings. I, I don't think it's, and maybe even just for the first year, see how it goes for the first year. Because you don't, right, you don't have to take it every year, you could decide one year. So I think for the first year, getting into a new program like this, it would behoove the board and show the taxpayers that you are being diligent with our, our money. You're getting us into, you're getting the town into this debt. It is a debt and we are the taxpayers. And I hope that you will strongly consider doing the guarantee at least for the first year. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Does anybody have any additional questions, even if you've already spoken? If you'd like to come up a second time, since it's a hearing? Nope? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. Then we're going to move on to the adoption of the bond ordinance. I have some, a couple of, I guess we'll call them resolutions here. The first one, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the adoption of bond ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second. Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. Ratner. Can we have a roll call, please?
Can I?
Oh, oh, sorry, any questions?
Because I have a question for the public. So just, I just have a couple of quick follow-up questions. In regards to, I know, Ms. Teague, you spoke about some of the work that can be done, that like, I guess has been done by staff regarding lighting and things like that. If there are certain components of the project that can be handled, I guess, in district, depending on, you know, workflow and things like that, is that something that can be, I guess, transferred and then reduce the overall cost of what is being spent?
So, I, we're not, I'm not opposed to that idea in general, it, it just, I, I'd say it's complicated, right? Because we, we build a, a project as, as a whole. And so we have multiple contractors and we may have contractors that are doing multiple different ECMs, the same contractor potentially. And coordination, from a coordination standpoint, through the construction, it gets complicated. So, I mean, to answer the question, we'll work with the district however the district would like us to work with it. But at the end of the day, I think it's in, on, frankly, I think it's in the district's, you know, best interest to do it as one project rather than having contractors that are going to be, you know, conflicting with each other during the construction process, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Another question was regarding the guarantee, but that's a separate resolution, so I can ask that after. Okay, so any other questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item.
Um, Dr. Peck, I'm sorry.
Yes. Thank you.
The next item is, it is recommended that the Monroe, members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the resolution, I'm sorry, approve authorization form and sale of the refunding bonds. Is there a motion?
Motion? Second.
I don't know, did you motion? Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. Alvarez. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so then the last one is, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the ESIP guarantee. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, questions, discussion? Ms. Ratner?
So, I remember when we spoke about this, whether it was at this meeting or at our committee meeting, I don't remember for sure, but that we did not have to make that decision at the same time that we were moving forward. Is this the point where we would need to decide if we are taking this guarantee or is this something that we can decide at a future date if we wanted to consider that?
Could we table that for the next meeting and then?
She's asking a question right now.
Have Mr. Teague do some research.
That's what Ms. Rat, that's what Ms. Ratner is asking right now. So, Mr. Weiss, would you?
Yeah, so, if whoever made the motion.
Withdraw the motion.
Is interested in withdrawing it, they certainly can do that.
I withdraw it with the stipulation that we do some research to find out other districts in our area and their savings and whether they took the guarantee and if they did, what was the outcome of it?
Well, I think the other part of that question, Ms. Ratner, if I'm not mistaken, is can we, do we have to vote on this tonight or can we vote on the guarantee next week?
I think.
I'm your bond counsel, I'm not your energy lawyer, but based on the meeting, I attended the committee meeting in January, it was my understanding from Caroline, who was at the meeting, that in order for you to sign your energy savings contract, and I don't know what your timing is for signing the contract, you have to make a decision because it goes into that contract. So I, I would caveat the answer by saying, depending on when you, what the timeframe is to sign that contract, will be when you need to make a, the decision.
And, and I can say that the contract with Honeywell is still under review at my office, so that has not been finalized as of yet. I would just, you know, to the extent that Honeywell is in agreement that that's the way to go, then I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're fine if, if, even if we wanted to have that contract allow for a, a time period to make that decision, we're fine with that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. So then, you're withdrawing your motion?
And we will talk to Mr. Teague about, you know, doing some research with other districts on the guarantee.
Okay, so the motion was withdrawn, so we don't have to do anything else?
Right.
Okay, so then that would be the end of the ESIP presentation. Okay, so then the next item on our agenda is the committee reports. Are there any committees that would like to give a report? Ms. Alvarez?
I have three reports to give tonight, but I'm going to space them out. So I'm going to give my first report for curriculum. I'm Ashley Gazala Bora, the chairperson, is unable to be here today, but she did provide me with the report, so I'm going to be reading it on her behalf. Okay, so the curriculum, co-curricular athletics and public, and pupil personnel committee meeting met on February 11th. It was a remote meeting due to the weather event that evening. The first item on the agenda was an update on the ice hockey team by the athletic director, Mr. Berendika. I would like to start by congratulating the MTHS Boys Hockey Team on their incredible GMC championship victory soon after this curriculum meeting. The committee was informed that night that the high school may not have enough ice hockey players next week to make a full team. The conversations have started with Hillsborough School District to figure out a co-op arrangement which could help us continue to offer the program to our players by having them practice to offer the program to our players by having them practice and play as a joint school team. The process to do this would require an application to the NJSIAA as the two teams, Monroe and Hillsborough, are part of two different divisions. Mr. Berendika will be taking all the necessary steps needed and the expectation is that as a result of this co-op, we will see some savings in the per pupil cost of running the ice hockey program. Once we enter the co-op, we will stay in it for at least two years, but the committee was assured that as soon as we have enough players to field a team, we will consider reverting back to the current setup. Next on the agenda was the curriculum document for dynamics of algebra two presented by Mrs. Gasko. The standards changed in 2023 and this update aligned the curriculum to the new standards. Next on the agenda was some very exciting updates on the summer enrichment programs by Mr. Maralda. It gives me great pride to share that after discussing this need for several years, thanks to the effort of the district administration, beginning this July, students will have the opportunity to earn credit in geometry or honors geometry during our all-new summer advancement initiative. Class sizes will be capped at twenty-five students. Students must have successfully completed ninth grade to be eligible for the MTHS Summer Advance 2025. Interested students can speak with their counselors to get further details on this program. Committee would like to note that for many years, our students have paid our neighboring school districts or petty school for this advanced opportunity. They will hopefully now enroll in these programs in Monroe, be taught by our teachers, and the district will be able to generate revenue for our own programs. Mr. Maralda then shared the plans for offering an extended duration, specifically a five-hour program for pre-K through second grade aged kids in the upcoming MTSD Summer Season Five. This will include two programs, Falcon's Nest Summer Academy for ages three and a half to five years old and Summer of STEM Mind and Motion Academy for grades K to two. Lastly, Mr. Maralda shared the plans for introducing pre-medical and medical technology programs for both elementary and middle school aged kids as part of the MTSD Summer Season Five. Next, the committee reviewed the new AI policy that Dr. Layman presented. This was the second discussion on this policy, but the draft had been updated significantly since the original version. The curriculum committee agreed on the proposed draft and passed it on to the policy committee for approval. Lastly, the committee discussed student achievement policy 5440. The administration proposed a revised policy for all third, all three grade levels, elementary, middle, school, and high school. While there was brief discussion on the middle and elementary criteria, that wasn't changed much, a lengthy discussion took place on the high school change being proposed. The current policy allows for students taking honors classes to be included in the principals list if they get eighty-five and above, while all other classes would need ninety or more for principals lists. The proposal was to remove this and make it ninety and above for all classes irrespective of the rigor. After both sides of the argument were discussed at length, the committee decided to send the policy back to the principals for another look to determine, one, if the criteria can be standardized amongst all three school levels, and two, should the students taking AP and honors classes be allowed to be on the principals list with a score of eighty-five and over. Dr. Chanley will have discussions with her team and bring back a recommendation for the next meeting. In the meantime, the committee has requested that we follow the current policy that allows honors students with eighty-five and over to be in the principals list. The discussion on this policy started as parents brought it to the intention of the board that the policy was not being following, followed. This concludes the curriculum committee update.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question. So, the existing policy, we're not following it?
No, currently, we're not following at the high school level.
At all, it's actually, it's at all three, it's at all three levels, middle, high school and.
Why, why aren't we having the policy followed?
It's not.
Is there, could Dr. Chanley explain so we could at least let the parents know why we're not, if we have a policy, why we're not using it?
So, as far as the middle school policy, up until 2021, we were following it, so that if you did get an eighty-five, you were recognized for principals list. After 2021 of November, if you're saying we're not following, I'm going to agree. Regarding why it's not being followed, I am going to acquiesce to Dr. Layman because this is specifically his area. It's one of those things where we didn't know that it was not being followed until it was challenged, but Dr. Layman has a little bit of background on it.
I think, I mean, Dr. Chanley said it, it was, the policy was generated in 2008. It was generated and from what we have found as, we, we had one person that we knew that was a part of the discussion, the revision in 2008. What the policy looks like now was not what was discussed in 2008. So, the high school adapted all of their recognition based on what the changes were going to be. So, what it comes down to is they did not know that the policy was written the way it was for the past seventeen years. We're five superintendents or ten superintendents, five high school principals, it wasn't known new. So when it was brought to our attention, we took a look at it and now it's in committee to be addressed. And the conversation now is debating the recognition of the honors and AP, because right now it's written as honors only. So if you're in an AP class, you need a ninety. If you're in an honors class, you need an eighty-five. So if we're talking about recognizing consistently students taking a more rigorous class, the policy as it's written doesn't follow that either, because it doesn't mention anything about AP, it only recognizes honors. So, that's a long-winded answer to say, when it was brought to our attention, we began to look and figure out why there was a discrepancy between what was being done for the past seventeen years and what, what's actually written in the policy. And now we're taking steps to, again, standardize and correct everything. And moving forward, we'll have this cleaned up and it'll be something that will be, from the, the very discussions, it'll be a series of compromises, because there are definitely perspectives about recognizing classes with different rigors in different ways and there's valid arguments on everybody's side about how that should be handled. And then layer in that recognition at different levels, elementary, middle, and high school. So, what seems like it could be a simple conversation to say, hey, just, this is just the criteria, let's do it. When you layer in the different parts of the conversation, it's much, much more complicated. But the answer to why it wasn't being followed is no one knew. So now we know and we're correcting it and that's what we're in the process of doing.
I seen we got a lot of emails, so I just want to make sure that.
Well, in recent times, we have, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yep, yep. So, we will have something at the next policy meeting and then we'll have something.
I think it's going to go to curriculum first.
Curriculum, policy, and then, and then we'll have it on the board agenda for March. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Ratner?
Yep. So, I know Ms. Bora had brought this up and I know, you know, she's a parent of high school students now, so she hears from them. I just wanted to shed a little bit regarding the middle school. I think one of the, which I see it changed in the current proposed policy, but what I think might have been confusing is it says right now, in the current policy as it stands today, it says to be eligible for the honor roll, pupils in grades five to eight must achieve an overall average of eighty-five percent in the courses taken during the regular scheduled school day. And so, when it said overall average, it's taking all of the courses that are there, whereas what, you know, we had been told was it's in that amount in every course. And so I think, like, I had heard, you know, as well, I personally actually experienced it myself with my daughter. So I think that's where the confusion sort of came in. And so, I see now it's changed that it will be a grade of eighty percent based on the proposed policy for the honorable, as well as a seventy-five to seventy-nine percent in honors and advanced courses at the middle school. Currently, it was seventy-five to seventy-nine percent in one course for any level at the middle school. And so that was something that I think also was just a bit confusing based on what was being done and I guess what was there. And then, my other question that sort of just came up this week because there was the Junior National Honor Society. I don't know if, when this was created in 2008, if we had a Junior National Honor Society.
You're not calling it by the right name, I'll correct you.
Okay, so that might, but I guess because we speak about the high school honor society in this policy, which, you know, is an, an average of all of those, you know, marking periods, from what I understood with the middle school is, it's every single marking period, every single grade has to be, you know, above a certain thing, which is honestly harder than the high school where it's that average. So if you have one bad marking period, you know, it's okay, you might still be considered. Whereas with the middle school, if you have that one marking period where you may have gotten one point below, then you're no longer eligible. But, you know, I tried to like see where that is in one of the policies and I, I couldn't find it and I wasn't sure if that was, if there was a reason for it.
Yeah, I can speak on the middle school. So, the reason why the middle school, first of all, it's not a national junior honor society specifically and I will tell you why. For many years, we had no honor society. When I was principal, probably ten years ago, I'm, I'm just guessing, don't quote me, ten or twelve years ago, we then decided to join the chapter, and that's why I'm going to correct you, because it is an actual national honor society. Due to the rigor that was required by the national honor society, because it's not required in middle school, so there's, it's not a policy, it's not required, we decided that it was not fair, exactly what you said, the requirements at a middle school level were more stringent than the requirements at the high school level, which really, from an educational point of view, makes no sense, right? So we went ahead and made the decision to no longer follow the national honor society and we just created a middle school Monroe Township Honor Society, so that we were able to lessen the requirements. Now that is what happened prior to me leaving.
Okay.
I cannot speak at this time, although I'll be happy to look into it, of what it is that they follow now. But I will let you know that when I was still principal, we did not follow the National Junior Honor Society any longer. We followed the Monroe Township Middle School because we wanted to be able to lessen the criteria. You cannot lessen a criteria when you follow anything that is state or nationally driven, you must follow the criteria. So all I can do is say, I understand what you're saying. It is my understanding that as of November of 2021, it was not a national honor society, but I will be happy to discuss it with the principal, look into it, and it makes sense, rather than just to provide you the answer because the public is listening, when we have our curriculum and then we have our policy meetings, this can be part of the discussion.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments for curriculum?
Ms. Fabiano, really quick, aside from that policy, I also just wanted to say that I really appreciate the idea of the preschool program, because I, having kids that just got out of that age, the rec program doesn't start until a certain grade and there's really like this gap in what you do with that age level and not only will this provide an opportunity, but it also can sort of get them acclimated to our district. So, I just wanted to, you know, give some praise for that idea.
Thanks. Anybody else? Are there any other committees that would like to give a report?
Yes, Billiane Grunds?
Go ahead.
So, the Billiane Grunds held their committee meeting on February 12th at 7:00 PM at the Monroe Township High School Media Center. Present were Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Alvarez, was virtual, Ms. Ratner, myself, Dr. Chanley, Dr. Layman, Mr. Teig, Mr. Selby, and Ms. Marty from Transportation. We spoke about the Applegarth Rod Grant Project update. Administration reviewed in detail an agreement for installation of electric distribution facilities that covers JCPN installing a new electric service transformer for the Applegarth School Rod Grant Project. The committee will make a recommendation that the board approve this agreement at the upcoming public meeting. The transformer appears to be available and ready for delivery as needed. The nineteen thirty-six roof project change order was closed out. Administration reviewed the details of the three separate change orders for the project that resulted in a final credit of approximately fifteen thousand dollars from this project allowance and those funds will remain with the rod grant account and available for any forthcoming roof projects. Bidding remaining building roof projects, administration advised that the plans and specifications are being finalized and the bid for the nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy-nine, and nineteen eighty-three roofs at Applegarth School will be advertised for a public bid on March 18th and the products are slated for construction during summer of 2025. That's the update on the Rod Grant. Mr. Teig explained to us that they do a shared service agreement with the township for road salt storage. He shared with us and we have a resolution. We will be acting upon to formalize a longstanding agreement for the storage of road salt product at the Township Road Department. The township has been quite generous in allowing us to store material and provide all the labor, they've provided all the labor for loading and unloading our trucks as needed during the winter season. The committee supports formalizing this matter and the board will counsel prayer a resolution for a board action accordingly. Our district grounds care contract renewal, the administration recommends the committee also supports renewing the contract with Boss Landscaping for lawn care operations. During the 2025, 2026 school year, the contractor is entitled to a two percent increase on their base contract of a hundred and forty thousand. Boss Landscaping has offered to forego an increase and renew at the base cost. The committee will recommend this for board action at this meeting. The ESOP project update, we just went over the update, we had a, a presentation here for the public tonight. The transfer out of service vehicles to firefighters for safety training. So, the district has three twenty-plus-year-old vehicles, I believe they're Dodge Durangos, and we will be doing a resolution to give those vehicles to Monroe Township Fire District Three to use for life safety training. So, we drafted up a, it should be noted that one of the three vehicles was actually donated to the board by the police department several years ago for use for our security staff. So, these three vehicles are all out of service and the fire districts, you said that they would be able to use them for life safety training. We also did a transportation overview with school security and those, we talked about safety measures, but those safety measures are confidential information. That concludes my, my meeting.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Piero? Are there any other committees that would like to give a report? Ms. Ratner?
Oh.
Do you want to go?
Sure. I, I can go.
Okay, Ms. Ratner will go.
Okay.
And then you can finish.
So, the Legislative Advocacy and Community Engagement Committee met on February 11th. Board of Education members present were myself, Ms. DePain, Dr. Peck, and Ms. Fabiano. And the district administrators in attendance were Dr. Chanley, Dr. Layman, and Mr. Maralda. The committee began with a discussion of current legislative items. We looked at some of the updates on the New Jersey School Board's Capitol Watch page, which was a recent addition to their website, and it provides updates on various education bills that are at the state level. And then, in addition to speaking at the Funding Reform Act hearings, we also shared some of our other advocacy steps that have been taken by the district, one of which was that we had an exciting meeting with some of our key stakeholders at the state level. Present at this meeting from the district were myself, Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Alvarez, Dr. Chanley, Dr. Layman, Ms. Allen, and Mr. Maralda. And so, the stakeholders from the state that were present were Mr. Damer, who was the interim commissioner of education, as well as a few members of his staff. It also included Senator Greenstein, who played a key role in putting the meeting together for us, members of her staff, as well as some staff members from the governor's office. So this was a really exciting opportunity for us to sort of meet people from multiple parts at the state level. Unfortunately, we couldn't have the meeting down in Trenton because that's when there was inclement weather that day, but I still feel like it, you know, it was helpful to have that meeting and we sort of shared some of our challenges, both surrounding full-day kindergarten, which was the initial reason for the meeting, because we know that they want to mandate that statewide and we are one of a few districts left. So we sort of explained why we are unable to do that right now and they shared some solutions, some which we've already discussed as a district and others which I know, you know, we said we can look into. And then we also discussed the funding formula, because while they said there's not going to be any major changes to that this year, this year's more about the transparency of the formula, they are going to be looking at that and it would be the Department of Education that's ultimately tasked with that, whether it's a revision or an overhaul or anything like that. So we sort of explained how we've been penalized for so long because of our unique community. And so, they definitely listened. There, I was impressed with some of the information that the commissioner was aware of. I think that it was, you know, it's always ongoing, you know, I know that this has been a goal for us for a long time and, you know, I would love to say that we're getting closer, but I definitely appreciated that they all took the time to meet with us. So we had sort of shared that at the meeting. The next thing that we discussed was the district advocacy website. We reviewed what is currently listed there and we spoke of additional ideas of things that can be added to the website. We also spoke about finalizing our advocacy letter that is currently there so that it's updated to our current needs and have it published there. And I also had mentioned at the meeting that I had heard from a board member in a that I had heard from a board member in a nearby district that Monroe came up at their board meeting as an example of what they'd like to see in their district as an advocacy effort. So I just wanted to say, you know, kudos to everybody who's been a part of that past and present. I wrote this twice, but we reviewed the advocacy letter. And then I also just wanted to share, well, not directly, part of the LACE committee meeting. As part of legislative advocacy, myself, Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Alvarez, and Ms. DePain also attended the county meeting for New Jersey School Boards. And the headline speaker was Senator Gopal, who is the Senate Education Committee Chair. It was a very busy day. And so it was really exciting to be able to have open conversations with him. He really was willing to take any and all questions, and as you guys know, I took advantage of that opportunity. And he said that he's actually heard about Monroe, and, you know, that he looks forward to meeting with us to sort of understand what some of our unique challenges are as well. So I did just want to share that as well.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Ratner?
Can I just add something? Also, by the end of that meeting, there's supposed to be, the governor put out recommendations for a cellphone non-usage in schools. So that was brought up at the end of that committee meeting, and some of the people were asking questions at South Plainfield. She's the president. If it becomes a fact that we have to not have cellphones, who's going to fund it? And Senator Gopal was very insistent on saying that if we needed, and which I got from it, for any district that needed funding for anything, and I would say our full-day kindergarten, and for the pouches that some of the districts use for the kids to put them in, he would insist that the state fully fund any of those mandates. So like what I've always said in all the years I've been a board member, state mandates, state doesn't pay. So I hope Senator Gopal stands up to his promise that day with anything that we need, and that's what he said, that the state, he will help the state to pay, help us pay for these needs. So if we do have to put a policy together, we'll go through policy on cellphones. And some districts have started it, but it's nothing written in stone. Thank you.
Yeah, he did definitely say he would not support an unfunded mandate, so... Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Alvarez, your turn.
All right, so the policy committee met virtually on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. Present at the meeting were Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Barandica, Mrs. Schaller? Or Shaler? Schaler. Mrs. Fabiano, Dr. Peck, Mr. Zeigner, and Mrs. Ratner. Mr. Barandica was present to discuss Policy 9163, Spectator Code of Conduct for Interscholastic Events. This is a mandated policy, and Mr. Barandica worked diligently to make the necessary adjustment. Mrs. Schaller, our Director of Food Services, also attended the meeting to review Policy 8500, Food Services, and Policy 8505, School Nutrition. 8500 states that if 20% or more of the students enrolled in a school in the district as of October 1st of the preceding school year were federally eligible for free or reduced-priced meals under the National School Lunch Program or the Federal School Breakfast Program. The district shall establish a school breakfast program in the school in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 18A 33-10. As a result, Woodland and Mill Lake School now offer breakfast. The high school currently offers à la carte breakfast on Fridays. The numbers will be reviewed to determine if the breakfast program will be increased at the high school for the 2025-2026 school year. Regarding Policy 8500, there was a question asked about how à la carte options are monitored at the elementary level. Parents can request through their respective schools that a limit be set on their child's accounts. The committee continued to review the policies under Strauss Sma Alert 234, and are on tonight's agenda for a first read. The Use of School Facilities policy was sent back to administration to consult with board counsel for revisions to the current language in the policy related to school security. And Policy and Regulation 5516, Use of Electronic Communication Devices, was tabled to the March meeting. And the revised organizational chart is on the agenda for board approval this evening. This concludes my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Ratner?
I just wanted to get clarification on the organizational chart. I don't know, Mr. Weiss, maybe you want to help us with this. Is this, I guess, considered a policy in itself? Or is it a policy to have a chart?
Actually, I have the answer. Because I did consult with Mr. Weiss already. So the policy says that we have to have an organizational chart. The organizational chart itself is not a policy, so that can just be approved tonight, this evening.
So the chart is not on the agenda as a policy for a first read? The chart is just on the agenda as to be approved? But the policy, what is it, 1100?
1100.
Something like that? Something like that. It's just that we have to have an organizational chart?
So it is actually right on the agenda now as a first read, but there will be a motion to correct that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then with personnel?
The Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, February 12th. Present at the meeting were Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Fabiano, Mr. Piro, and Mrs. DePain. There were two resignations due to retirement. The administration is recommending a candidate this evening for the Supervisor of Special Services position. The board appreciates how quickly this position has been filled. Lastly, there is also a Transportation Secretary for approval on tonight's agenda. This concludes my report.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Alvarez? Ms. DePain?
Unfortunately, due to bad weather, we couldn't get the CAC members onto a Zoom meeting. We were worrying about them all coming together. So there was no CAC meeting this month, but if everybody's listening out there who are members, the next meeting will be March 11th, 7 o'clock, at the high school. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Alvarez for personnel? Okay, then we're going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is our public forum for agenda items only. Any members of the public wishing to speak, you'll have four minutes to do so. Please come up and state your name and municipality for the record.
George Keltman, 5 Kelly Court, Monroe. I have a question that's mostly directed to Jerry Teig. Streetlights in our parking lots, or the schools' parking lots, it's my understanding from security that the school has about the same luck with JCPNL as the rest of the community, which is not much. And it occurs to me that there's quite a liability that gets passed on to the school should someone be injured in a parking lot that was attributed to poor lighting. And I'm wondering, with this project that was discussed earlier with improved lighting, understanding that that project was talking about internal lighting in the buildings, not parking lot lighting that is currently with JCPNL. But might we want to look at that? And maybe go to LEDs that are managed by the school as opposed to being dependent on the undependable JCPNL, which doesn't seem to want to respond to streetlight outage?
I would just say that yes, it is our desire to bring those parking lots that are under JCPNL in-house. We have done that on some occasions. Most recently, I believe it was three years ago when we did the underground storage tank replacement project at the transportation garage. I used that as an opportunity to upgrade those lights and take those back under our control. I applied for a grant, which we received, which paid for the lights, and then we had those installed. So we do take that approach. It should be noted that the majority of lights, though, parking lot lights are owned by the district. For example, the entire high school facility is owned by the district and operated by the district. Brookside School, Barclay Brook. The middle school, former high school, is JCPNL, as is Oak Tree, primarily JCPNL.
So do you think that this new project will address these? Or is that something we need to do?
We would have to do that as a separate capital project. It's not included in the scope currently.
All right, thank you.
Shell Armino, Monroe Township. The lights, since we're talking about lights in the fields, is there a time when they automatically go off? Because especially in the winter, when no one's really at the fields utilizing them, they're still on later than they should be. And if we're talking about, you know, energy savings, that should be one of the things we should be controlling now. And I know, I've mentioned it before in these meetings, and I still see the lights on all the time. Are they automatic? Or, you know, what's the story with those?
The field lights are controlled by a calendar schedule, primarily controlled by Mr. Barandica and the athletic programs, as well as the Township Recreation Department. I will tell you that possibly on some occasions, when you've driven by, when you see the lights on, if an event ends, for example, at 9:00 PM, Mr. Barandica very wisely allows the lights to stay on for about 20 minutes thereafter.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you again for timing. Thank you for that. But I can assure you that in the cold dead of winter, there's no events going on, and the lights don't need to be on. So somebody needs to be in charge of shutting those lights off, especially if no events are scheduled. I mean, I live around the block, so I'm passing them all hours of the night, and they're still on. So again, I appeal to this board and to the administration to look into that and make that happen.
Did you want me to...? Oh, I don't want to waste your time. You go ahead, because I did want to make the...
The hockey team, and I missed that because I went out. I apologize. How many students do we need for the hockey team? And how many do we have?
So she didn't include the amount that we need for a full team?
Well, full team. Okay, well, if you don't know, let...
We can go back and get you that information.
I have the information. So the current team is a varsity team. Previously, we've had JV and varsity. The ballpark is about 16 to 18 athletes right now. We don't anticipate being able to field a full team next year, which is why many teams that can't field a full team will join a co-op. The co-op costs are proportional to how many athletes you have participating. So we wouldn't commit to a number. It's only paid per athlete, because there's tryouts between the two teams, and they fill positions as needed.
All right. My thought was, because it's about $60,000, I believe, for what, a three-year or $60,000 a year? I would never want to take anything away from our students or our athletes, either academically or recreationally. But if we can't get a team, we shouldn't spend that kind of money under the circumstances. So I think one of the options is just not having a team if we can't put it all together.
So the co-op would allow the shared ice time, and that's the largest cost. And it would be divided equally or proportional to the participating schools.
In terms of the policy committee, I watch the policy committee. I would like to thank Ms. Alvarez and Ms. Ratner. You did an excellent job. You're really terrific at running the meetings and going through the policy, so I appreciate that. But I did try to go to the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, and the time was changed. On the meeting times, it said it was 8:00. And then when I went to look, because I try to do things on a monthly basis and write in the times, and then it said it was 5:00. So somehow I missed it, but do you change the times? If you look at the dates that come up for the year when you make the schedules, I thought it said 8:00. So I was going to attend that meeting at 8:00, but then I looked, because there was no meeting, and it said 5:00. Can someone explain that?
Sure. So our committees were affected by the weather last week. So we had wound up condensing some meetings on Tuesday night to be virtual. And then with the schedule shift, there was a... We needed to move Buildings and Grounds to, I think we moved it to 6:00.
There was no Finance Committee meeting, so we dropped the time down.
It was still on Wednesday, but it was at 6:00, not 1:00.
When was that put on the computer or on the website?
I don't know.
The public needs to be informed when... And it says on the bottom, to your credit, you know, time's subject to change. But people like me, maybe there's not a whole lot of them, but I still want to go to the meetings. It said 8:00. I was prepared to go at 8:00. I'm driving home at 5:00, so I missed it.
We can make it, adjust the time on the website if we change it? Because I know we put the links of with the time on the website, so we can make sure that the links are adjusted on the website.
That would be great. And how, what, so was that a last-minute change?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Brian Fabiano, Monroe Township. It's been a while since I've been here in person. I come to police because I know it's election time, and all the members of the running parties will be here with their nonsense. But I've got a lot to say in the next section, but what I'll say in this section is this. I find it really hard to believe that the superintendent can sit here and say, I mean, we pay the superintendent multiple hundreds of dollars per year to supervise the school district. To sit here and say that you don't know whether policies in the district are being followed or not is just ludicrous. I don't care if you left the middle school in 2021, if you left it in 2020, if you left it 2022. It's your job to make sure that the policies in the school district are being followed. And it tells me that if this policy is not being followed, what other policies are not being followed? In regards to busing, regards to student time, whatever. There's no excuse to sit here and say, "I don't know," as a superintendent, that policies are not being followed. And quite honestly, Dr. Lehman, there's no excuse to sit here and say, "It's 18 years old. We don't..." It doesn't matter. Policies are policies, and they should be followed. And I question, if you're not following this, what else are you not following? It's the board's job. You're elected to represent the interests of the community, and part of that is to make sure that the policies of this school system are followed. So to sit here and say you don't know is nonsense. That's what I want to make in this section. I also just wanted to just briefly talk on the ESOP. No questions, but there's been a lot of negativity from, you know, the usual one or two, call them pot stars in the community. One who was overwhelmingly defeated in the last election. But I truly, as a resident, appreciate the work that Mr. Teig and this administration has done, the time you've put into this ESOP program. We need to be, as a school district, innovators. We need to go out and find ways to save money so that money can be allotted to other programs in other ways, other things that we need. By having this program happen, it brought money into the school district. We were allowed to, we were able to allot money to get the much-needed changes and updates at Applegarth, as well as other programs. So I don't think there's a lot of negativity really around this program. I think there should be really applause from the community. Yeah, work out whether you want to insure it or not, and I can go both ways on it. But to see us undertake something like this that will bring savings into a program, into a school district that certainly needs the money is something that I think should be celebrated, not, you know, politicized for some political benefit. So that's all I'll say here. And then I'll come back to the next section with quite a bit. But also wanted to wish a happy 21st birthday to Mr. DePain on our birthday today.
Thank you. Thanks for getting the A, Troy.
She told us no. Are they allowed to sing? I said you told us not.
No, 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 it's okay. No singing.
Hi, Roshni Shaw, Monroe Township. Happy birthday. I just, I wasn't going to come up and speak, but I was just listening to the discussion about the curriculum committee and the principal's list and honor roll, and I just wanted to confirm something. My son is in the middle school, and I don't want to put his grades on blast on something that's recorded, but he did receive like between an 85 and a 90 in an accelerated class. And on his report card, it did say, "Congratulations on achieving the principal's list." So all the other grades were 90-plus, right? And one of his accelerated class grades was between an 85 and a 90. And one of his accelerated class grades was between an 85 and a 90. And it did say, "Congratulations on achieving the principal's list." So in the middle school, it is being followed, because it was a big deal for him, for him to be on the principal's list. So I just wanted to confirm that for you, because I was hearing some of the discussion, and so just wanted to let you guys know. I have no questions or anything like that, just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sangeeta Goli here. Actually, about the principal's list, the question where the policy is not being followed was brought up last May. That was me. And it took almost nine months, and we did not get to a consensus. How can we avoid this going forward? I mean, policy is policy, and there can be decisions made much sooner.
Correct policy. You're right, policy is policy, and we should be making sure that this policy is followed. I know Dr. Lehman and Dr. Chanley have both expressed that, and we've talked about it in policy and curriculum, the policy is being revised, but up until the revision is final, the current policy should be being followed.
Correct, but the amount of time it took, you know, to come to on this stage, can this be, you know, expedited, any such, any such future issues?
Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, do you, she said, it's, it's been, you said nine months, correct?
Yeah, last May.
Is there a way to expedite this, to move this along a little bit faster? I mean, I know, I know as a.
The retention of the administration nine months ago.
So, just to let you know, on March, whatever we said the date was, I'm just trying to think of the committee dates, I don't know what's out my head.
11th.
On March 11th, the decision will be made. Decision will be made, it'll be brought to first read in March, and then it'll be brought to second read, and it will be confirmed, without question.
And any future issues like this, it is better if they can be looked into sooner instead of waiting for, you know, this long? I don't know, probably you guys have processed.
Yeah, as soon as it comes, as soon as the board was made aware of this, we brought it to curriculum, I think we started the conversation, not this past month, but maybe two months ago. So we, we started it, we had started the conversation as soon as the board became aware. And then it takes, there is a process that we have to follow before it becomes an actual policy. Once the policy gets put on the agenda, that becomes a first read, and then the following one, it becomes a second read, and then it goes up to be an official policy. So that part takes time on our part. But we know, we always encourage if, if you please reach out to, I know we've received several emails recently, and it was.
I responded to every one.
Yes, yes, and it's been helpful to see those, so we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chrissy Skirby Monroe. I just had a question about the organizational chart policy. Policy 1100 is district organization, and that mandates that you have to have an organizational plan. 1110 is the actual organization chart. And for as long as I can remember coming here, anytime there was a change to the organizational chart, that policy was changed, the org chart was changed, and the board did vote on that. So I don't know if the board is going away from that. I don't know why we're saying the organizational chart is not a policy, because it is, and it's listed as that, organizational chart, policy 1110. The one before, 111100 is district organization, that mandate you have to have an org chart. And just to comment on the curriculum, I, I think that part of the discussion that wasn't recapped in the curriculum committee update was the fact that the weighted average is being used for certain accolades at the high school, where the principal's list was not using the weighted average. And that seemed to be the issue for the parents that brought it forward, was you're using it for National Honor Society admission, you're using it for valedictorian, but you're not using that weighted average to give the accolade of principal's list. And if you're not going to use it for that, then you shouldn't use it for anything. And quite honestly, something that Mr. Zeichner said at the committee meeting struck me as a parent, when you said that we're not making our children achieve higher, that we're lowering the standards. We're not. In fact, when you don't give that child that accolade of the achievement that they've gotten, which is a weighted average, you're going to have more students not want to take the AP course and take a regular course so that they can get the accolade of the principal's list to put on their college application. So these kids are taking a very more rigorous course, and we're weighting it, we're telling them, we're weighting your average because it's that much more rigorous. But then we're not giving them the accolade. So my worry would be that we would, we've, and AP courses is not in the policy, because when that policy was created, we offered very little AP courses. Over the last 10, 15 years, we've increased our AP courses tremendously. So we had a lot of honors back then, that's why it says the 85. Add the AP in there as well. But I would really caution, you want our students to be wanting to take the AP courses and the honors courses. And with that, you want to, you want to treat all of that the same. You don't want to say, "Well, we're going to use your weighted average for this, but we're not going to use it for that." That's not really fair to the child. It's not. So I really hope that when you're discussing this in policy, you will look at that, because you don't want students to start not taking those more rigorous classes. Because after all, we get an award, right, Dr. Lehman, for how many AP courses that our students take. So, I mean, and that is a tremendous accolade for our district, is what we're offering now, because we didn't offer, and now we are, and now we're winning awards for, for offering that many. So I, I just really hope you'll look at that, that policy, and really consider what it means. I don't think we're making it less rigorous, I think we're giving the accolades to the students that deserve them. And Dr. Chanley, I just want to apologize for the torture that you go through by certain people. It's really unprofessional, it's unacceptable. And having been the board president with you as the superintendent, I know that it is your desire to make sure that all policies are followed. We've seen that, and the district knows that. So ignore the noise, because that's all it is. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing now, we will close the public forum and go to the next item on our agenda, which is our assistant superintendent's report. Dr. Lehman?
Sure. As usual, our student board members highlighted a few things that I was going to bring attention to, specifically in the accolades for our recent winter sports teams. And we will be recognizing them in the near future at a board meeting for their accomplishments as well. But one thing I do have that I can highlight is the NJMEA State Music Education Conference will take place over the next three days in Atlantic City. So best of luck to our Monroe Township High School Honors Wind Ensemble, Monroe Township Middle School Chamber Singers, and the Monroe Township Middle School Falcon Jazz Ensemble, who all auditioned and were accepted to perform over the next two days as part of this conference. This is the most performing groups Monroe has ever had accepted to perform at the event, and the most performing groups this year of any district in New Jersey. So that's a testament to our tremendous program. And additionally, congratulations and best of luck to, we have four Monroe Township High School band students and four Monroe Township High School chorus students who auditioned against students from all over New Jersey and were accepted into the NJMEA, which is the New Jersey Music Education Association, All-State Wind Ensemble, Symphonic Band, and Treble Choir. All will be rehearsing over the next few days with their respective groups, and will have performances both in Atlantic City as a part of this conference over the next three days. And then this Sunday, they perform at the New Jersey PAC in Newark for one of their state performances. So congratulations to our arts program. As you hear, almost every month, we have a tremendous, essentially 4 through 12 band and chorus program, as well as the theater programs, and this is just testament of our ongoing student success. So congratulations to all those teachers, as well as students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Dr. Chanley?
Good evening, everyone, and we have a few retirements that I'd like to start out with. So we have someone who came to us who had already had a career somewhere else, Carolyn McPerory, high school special education teacher. She's with, been with us for five years, and now she'll be retiring. Melanie Reum, grade four teacher at Woodland School, 20 years. And Rosina Vento is a parent of a tree for 18 years. We always wish our Falcons well on their next flight for retirement and to enjoy a very happy and healthy time, where they can continue to just have, have a great opportunity to be with family and friends and wherever they decide to land. Additionally, similar to what Dr. Lehman said, our school board, student members do a fabulous job on the various different events and all the different activities that go on in many of the schools, whether it be the 100-day celebration, or activities for wellness, Healthy Heart Month. The nurses step up, as well as school counselors. I have the opportunity to visit schools, that is something that I pride myself on doing quite often. And I had the opportunity to celebrate Day of Optimism last Friday. It is a culminating activity in the middle school in regards to Om Pareek, who was a student there who lost his life to pediatric brain cancer. I think it's important to comment that many organizations here in Monroe joined together for the celebration of his life and the legacy that he leaves in order to raise money for pediatric cancer. Save the date, if I could just give a shout out, is May 18th. It's a walk, a walkathon, and it's also, I believe, a five-mile, and you can correct me, I think it's five miles, five-mile run. I only do the walk, I definitely don't do the five miles.
It's a 5K.
5K, I apologize. You can tell I don't know what to talk about.
Like 3.3 miles, but 5K.
Thank you very much, President Fabiano, 5K. So for those of you, a lot of the information will be coming out and, and sharing that with you. He is not the only child that has lost his life. We have had sadness, I've been here, whatever, 20-plus years, and we've had sadness. And what we like to do is just, whatever possible, to be able to raise money for the research that just helps to find cures. That's, that's all we could say. It is a wonderful organization, and I believe ICAM and MIC are two of the major organizations that help to, to create this walkathon, whether it be a 5K or just a mile, mile walk or mile run. So you'll be looking, you'll be seeing information regarding that. And I think it's, it's a shout out that we're very fortunate here, because many organizations, whether they be at the elementary, middle school, or high school, really raise a lot of financial funding for different organizations, and a lot of them unfortunately are cancer, and pediatric cancer. So I did want to make that comment. On that note, I will get directly to my recommendations. So under personnel for a 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached personnel items A through Z.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. Ratner. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Ratner?
I just had a quick question on letter P? That's before Q, right? Yeah. The head coach for cricket. I remember when this had come to the board initially, it was being considered a, a club, if I recall. Is, has that been changed now that it's now a sport? I remember the person who came was so enthusiastic when he spoke about it, but I remember when it came, it was initially at the club level.
So as they work through their, it's essentially probationary time, they do transition into a club, and then it involves, I don't actually, I think, we may have actually been a non-club at last year as well, because we have stipends in place that are agreed upon with the association. Coaches are paid based on the tier that their sport falls in, and this is already predetermined. So this is not a new sport in terms of, this is the first time it's being approved as a sport.
Okay.
Yep.
And then just looking also at that, and this is just sort of generalization, do we, I know every year we do like an audit of our clubs to see what we need and what we don't. Do we do the same in regards to coaches? Because I know there are some sports where we have more athletes and less, so I just wanted to ask, because obviously we can see that on the agenda.
Yes, so the athletic director, and again, I think hockey is a perfect example, right? So we evaluate the participation and the need for support for every, every sport, and I, I think we're living through, you know, the ebb and flow of, almost like the, the waves of students that come through. We went through this a few years ago with the softball teams. We weren't able to field a freshman team at one point, and now we're back to supporting that. And it's just the interest level of students as they progress through, and that will ebb and flow. Again, we wouldn't have five coaches for five athletes, right? So it's, everything's proportional.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, abstain on letter N and letter O.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter V.
Okay. Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, nine-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached personnel items AA to BD.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. DePaine. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter AX for Ms. Abruzzi Lookout, and letter BC for Mr. Ratner.
Okay. Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under board action, 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items A through H.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. DePaine, second by Ms. Ratner. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to make a motion to pull the organizational chart and vote separately on it. Letter E.
The only issue with that is that there's a motion pending.
Do you want me to take it back?
Only if you'd like to.
Well, I have to think about it, but. I'll, I'll, oh gee. I'll take back the motion that I just made about that section and the org chart.
Okay, so Ms. DePaine is rescinding the motion, so now, Ms. Alvarez?
Have to make it again?
Has to.
I'd like to make a motion to pull the org chart and vote separately on it.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So now, I would suggest that someone makes a motion to approve all of the items, with the exception of the org chart.
I make a motion to approve all the items except the org chart. Second.
It was Ms. DePaine and Ms. Ratner.
Okay.
Any questions or comments?
I did just really quickly want to thank the administration for listening to the concerns that we brought regarding next year's calendar. For those who may have seen it on there, it's not there, and it will be reviewed, taking some commentary into consideration, and then brought back next month.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board action, nine-member vote. Oh, I apologize. You all chucked.
No, we did both. We did that.
They pulled, they tabled it first, and then they voted on everything else.
No, we, didn't we vote on the org chart?
I thought we voted on the.
No, did we vote on the org chart?
I thought we voted on the.
To pull the org chart. Okay, so now we need to make the motion to bring the org chart back.
My turn again.
I would like to make a motion to approve the organizational chart.
Second.
The second by Ms. DePaine. Questions or comments, Ms. Ratner?
So just looking at this, I know we had spoken about the state stuff, and I think we had initially said we would take it off before the, the State Board of Education. It's there, at least from the agenda that I have, so I don't know if, I mean, I don't It's there, at least from the agenda that I have. So I don't know if, I mean, I don't think it affects it heavily either way, but I just know we had spoken about.
The electorate?
No, leaving the electorate in New Jersey, this is what comes up from the agenda.
Well, it's not, it's been corrected.
No, it's been corrected.
We got this the other day. Okay, this is what's on the agenda for the meeting. Is that in personnel?
Yes.
Okay, what's on the agenda for the meeting still has that there, so it's two different things, I guess.
My suggestion would be, since there are two different org charts that apparently were circulated, and since there's nothing pressing that requires it to be done tonight, my recommendation would be that we clear the deck, so to speak, and do this in March.
I make a motion to.
Withdraw my motion.
Yes, Ms. Alvarez can withdraw her motion.
Okay, but I make a motion to clear the deck and move the org chart to March.
Would we table the item?
Whatever he said, whatever.
Ms. Alvarez pulled her motion, so I think we are adequately covered.
Yes, she already, she already made the motion to table it.
Happy birthday.
Okay, so I think we can go to the next one, yeah.
So under Board Action, nine-member vote, it is recommended the Board approve the attached Board Action items A through R.
Is there a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. DePaine. Are there any questions or comments? Board Action, nine member. No? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on, oh my gosh, letter R. Yes, recuse on letter R.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes my report. Shining everybody you know us now.
Can I do just a quick point of procedure? Is that what it's called?
Point of order?
Thanks, thanks. So with the organizational chart, I'm fine with the action we're taking, but from my understanding, you had made the motion to vote on that separately. So we're not voting on it. We don't need to table it even though we're not voting on it?
My recollection is Ms. Alvarez pulled the motion, so there's nothing to vote on.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I understand what we're doing.
Okay, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
This is Administrator's Report.
Okay. It is recommended the Board Action Items A through LB be approved by consent roll call under a 10-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. DePaine. Are there any questions or comments? See, can we have a roll call, please?
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, recuse on letter B, items related to the learning tree.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes to all, but recuse on part of J, where my name is there going to a conference.
Okay. Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on the list for Mr. Ratner, Mr. Snyder, and Ms. Abruzzi Lithgow. And then also, I don't know, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Just recommended the Board Action Items M through Q be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. DePaine. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead, Ms. Allen.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Board President's Report. I'm going to keep this brief. I do want to congratulate Ms. Ratner for earning her certified and master board member certification. One of the things that the public doesn't get to see that we do is we do attend a lot of professional development. There are a lot of meetings and trainings that we attend, and Ms. Ratner has earned the highest level of individual certification that a board member can achieve. So congratulations to Ms. Ratner, it's very well deserved. Also, I know it's already been said, but I do want to thank our legislators, especially Senator Greenstein, for setting up the meeting that we had with Commissioner Damer in, well, in Trenton. It was very much appreciated, and I'm hopeful that we're able to continue the conversations with her and hopefully bring in Senator Gopaul soon so that we can have a follow-up conversation. What's interesting to know in all of the conversations that we have had is they know who we are. They know Monroe. And it's good that we are able to keep our name out there for them to, you know, kind of get to know us and, you know, what our needs are. So again, I do, we are very appreciative for their time. What sparked that initial conversation was the conversation surrounding full-day kindergarten. That is a thing that I know that we have been talking about as a board for three-plus years now. And it is part of our strategic plan, and it has been continuing discussions with Dr. Chanley and Dr. Lehman of, you know, hopefully what that could potentially look like for us. So there are lots of exciting things that are happening for us and as a board and as a district, and I am appreciative for everybody here sitting at this table because it's through all of our efforts that all these things are happening. So thank you to everybody. And that, that's it. That's my report. So we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, which is our other board business. Are there any board members who would like to speak? Ms. Ratner?
I would also like to congratulate Ms. Fabiano on achieving the certified board member certification. So congratulations to her. And I also did want to share, Ms. Bora is this close to it as well. She just needs to attend a delegate assembly, and then she's there. When the three of us were elected, you know, we really said that we were going to, you know, really try to achieve this. And I know all three of us had gotten the new board member certification, and, you know, I know we all do a lot of professional development. So, you know, congratulations, Ms. Fabiano, on achieving that as well. I also did want to share that I do have an upcoming legislative committee meeting in March. And I look forward to sort of hearing some of the things that are going on there. One thing that was brought up was that there was correspondence sent from the state that no districts will be losing more than 3% of their funding. That hasn't really been our issue, but I'm interested to see how that might affect, because they have a certain amount in the budget, so how that might affect us. And I know we get those numbers, I believe it's at the end of this month, so, you know, we'll cross our fingers and keep communicating.
Fingers, toes, all of it.
I did want to also, I know she's not here anymore, but our student board member, Sehaj, I learned that she was cast in the role of Sebastian for The Little Mermaid at the high school. So I look forward to seeing her in that role. Congratulations to her. And I ultimately just wanted to, you know, thank everyone. I know there's been a lot going on the last month, a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions. And so I really appreciate, you know, everything that is, is being done by, you know, my fellow board members and administration.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes, Ms. DePaine. Oh, and happy birthday.
Okay, that's good.
Still think we should say.
That's enough, it's almost over. I know I was looking on Facebook, and it was brought up at one of the county meetings, that quite a few boards have gotten board certification. And I think I had asked at the one meeting that it's 12 or 14 meetings in attendance, full board, in a matter of four years. So I think that's a goal we should put aside for ourselves. I mean, there was quite a few boards that received it. And like you said, we've been working so cohesively together, and I think it would do justice for us and give us the credit and merit that we have for working so hard to be, you know, certified through NJSBA. So I think it's something to work on.
I appreciate that, and I do, we have kind of started that process by, we submitted the policy manual for review through New Jersey school boards. Actually, I probably should reach out to them because it's been, they said six to nine months because they had so many that they were reviewing. Yeah, but that's one of the requirements for, for that, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Alvarez?
I just want to piggyback on some of the comments that were made here today. I'm really proud of this board and how cohesive we've been working together. I feel like that's been a big factor in how we've been able to move forward and get heard and seen by our legislatures. We've gone to hearings. People know Monroe, people know our faces, people know our issues. So I just want to thank everybody on this board for being so cohesive and working together. It's really a pleasure. And the administration as well. I'm sorry, didn't mean to leave you out, but the administration as well, including attending these meetings with us and on short notice sometimes, but we appreciate it very much.
Mr. Piero?
I just have a couple things I'd like rectified for the public. One is high school graduation. Dr. Chanley, could you tell us why we moved it back to Trenton instead of having it at Rutgers? Why we moved it back to Trenton?
Cost.
And it was, do you recall what the cost was for Rutgers?
So off the top of my head, please don't quote me, it was $30,000 plus, if I'm not mistaken. The difference was a $20,000, what is it, $23,000 difference?
Yeah, it was a big difference.
Approximately $23,000. Yeah, it was very sad that we had to move it back.
And they, well, they also, they increased their price. There was like a 30% price increase from Rutgers?
So Rutgers was way overpriced, and that's why we, okay. My next question is, I don't really, trying to understand it. So originally, we had the school calendar for next year on the agenda. We had taken it off. Who makes the school calendar?
It's a question, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So Dr. Lehman and I sit down, we look at the school calendar. We try and keep any holidays that have been given, usually religious-oriented, we try and keep. So if you get a holiday, we try not to remove it. Then we look at, we have to have a minimum of 180 days. We try and put in at a minimum one snow day. We do look at the, we do look at the calendars around us, East Brunswick, South Brunswick, North Brunswick, New Brunswick. One of the reasons why it was pulled is, one of the questions that we were given, and Dr. Lehman and I are trying to work it out, is about early dismissal days. So the way early dismissal days work, there are a few that are contractual. So for example, because the contract of the MTA states that they only have three evenings per year, if a teacher does more than three evenings in order to compensate them, they would then have to have an early dismissal day. It's not a half-day, because it's not a half-day, it's an early dismissal, because it's a four-hour session. So that was one of the things. The other thing is, historically, before the Jewish holidays, because the Jewish holiday, unlike a regular Christian holiday, begins at sundown, we have many Jewish teachers, and if they get out of work before 4:00 and sundown is at 5:00 or 5:30, we've always did an early dismissal because it gives them the time to go home to have the holiday. Whereas a Christian holiday is actually on the day that you're off for the whole day. So that's the other early dismissals. Additionally, early dismissals have always been, long before Dr. Lehman and I, before Thanksgiving and the Christmas vacation. So when we started looking at all these things, I agreed. I agreed with the board members that brought to my attention that we'd like to look and see how can we get rid of, or at least change, the early dismissal days. So for example, if you have early dismissal day for junior prom and high school, senior prom, why shouldn't it be for the whole district? If I confirm with Miss Marner that it doesn't affect transportation, then we wouldn't have it for elementary, which we know is the issue because elementary children normally do not stay alone, whereas middle school and high school could have early dismissal and go home. Additionally, one of the things that I implemented when I became on, when I became acting, was that we gave off the week in November. So normally, you have school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, which is Monday and Wednesday. I did look at the neighboring districts. A lot of them have worked for Election Day, and some of them do not. So you go to school on Monday and Wednesday. For continuity of instruction, having school Monday and Wednesday, and on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and this is my opinion, really breaks up the continuity of instruction. However, this particular year, we did work with the township, and we no longer have voting in high school, and we no longer have voting as a polling place in Oaktree. We have two schools left. We have it in Brookside and we have it in Woodland. I am in the process of having my next meeting, I don't know if it's going to make a difference, with the county electorate to say, can you move these two polling locations? Because then we would be open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So when I originally looked at the calendar with Dr. Lehman, and we were trying to make it work, because one of the other holidays, which we are going to be giving, is the second day of Eid. Our neighboring districts do give the second day of Eid, similar to how we have two days in Russia Shunah. We try to accommodate the diversity in our district. So when we did that, we realized that in order for us to make all of the days that we need, not graduate on the 25th, by the way, I did look on South Brunswick and a couple of districts, they are graduating on the 25th to 26th. And really try and keep it as close to, we try and keep that third week, we saw all of these issues. So rather than just go ahead and do the, and push it forward, whether we get a yes vote or a no vote, I listened to what I heard, and I agreed, let's sit down and look again to see what, if anything, can be done, number one, with the early dismissal days, because there are also four other early dismissal days in the calendar that are there because we, instead of having a full day off for in-service for our teachers, we do an early dismissal because we are required, contractions, to provide them with in-service hours and training. So these are the different things that we're looking at to try and make these changes. So that is why it was pulled.
And, you know, I just want the public to understand, and this is the way I perceived it, and I learned this a lot by being a board member, is that the board only approves things. We don't decide who gets hired, we don't decide what companies to use, we don't decide what days to have off. That's all done by administration, and then you bring it to the board, and then the board either approves it or disapproves it, correct? Okay.
You know, I mean, I'm always open to hearing anything that's brought to me. If we can make something creative, sometimes you could just flip back. You know, instead of doing the week after Easter, if you flip it backwards, you gain a day because you have to also do Passover, always do Good Friday. You know, Easter Monday is something that we're considering. Easter Monday is not, to my knowledge, and I could be corrected, is not a Christian holiday, but it's always something that we've been giving off long before me. However, all of our neighboring districts don't give it on me. So perhaps we would come to school on the day. Rather than have off completely on Indigenous people Columbus Day and Veterans Day, we are in school, but we're making an early dismissal. We could get rid of the early dismissal, but we do that for anybody who wants to participate in activities because it used to be a day off. So we brought it back by saying, we're going to have it on the calendar, but we will do it as an early dismissal day. So you are correct, though, Mr. Piero, the Board of Education approves or does not approve. They do not micromanage and get involved in the creation calendar. 100% have opinions, as we do in all of our meetings, but they do not make those decisions. Dr. Lehman and I really try and do the best we can to look at the neighboring districts and make it as best we can.
Thank you.
If I can just piggyback on, on the calendar really quick, which, you know, I sort of mentioned, like, I appreciate you listening to the feedback, and I think one thing that's really great about our board is that we have a very diverse board, right? We have parents that are at the elementary level, high school level, we have, you know, seniors. So we're hearing, you know, we have, we all have our own opinions, which, you know, I'm never shy in sharing, as you guys know. And then we also hear from, you know, our constituents about things that they're concerned about. And so ultimately, while we don't create it, then we can bring back, you know, both our feedback as well as the feedback from the community that we're hearing, you know, and sort of, you know, it's not, it's not guaranteed we can make everybody happy because, you know, there are people that will want to have school on Election Day, and there are people who will not, right? And they're, so I think, you know, what we try to do is just listen to as many people as we can and, you know, find a solution that works for as many as possible.
Can I say something, please? I have a daughter that teaches in New Brunswick and grandson that goes to school in East Brunswick. And East Brunswick has a lot of days off, and of course, Grandma always gets the grandson, which I utterly love having him. So she calls me up today, and she said, we got our calendar in New Brunswick today, and I know you guys have been working on it. And she always looks for the Easter vacation to see if it syncs with hers. And the last two years, it's been syncing East Brunswick and New Brunswick. So that means I'm off the hook babysitting, but I miss it because we love having him. But she also told me, and we were talking about graduation, that New Brunswick does not pay to go to the Rutgers, to the Rack, is it called? The Rack?
Jersey Mike's.
It's a sub-arena. So whatever, it's after a sub, right? Jersey Mike's. I've been there, but I can't remember. They get it for free because I guess they're part of New Brunswick, but they have places in Piscataway and other places or Middlesex. But we're Middlesex County, and I don't understand why they don't give all of Middlesex County free to go to the Jersey Mike's Arena. So I'm just voicing my opinion.
I hope they hear that. I hope that they are listening.
I hope, yeah, I'm sure they're up listening to me. The chancellor of Rutgers, if you're listening, all Middlesex County schools should graduate at your, your sub-arena, Jersey Mike's Arena. Thank you.
Dr. Peck?
Just to kind of piggyback on the calendar, as a Jamesburg resident, a lot of our high schoolers go home to little kids, and when the calendars don't match up, sometimes those half-days that we have in Monroe doesn't, or just that mismatched calendar can be hard for the childcare, because sometimes those older kids are in charge of watching the younger ones. So if we get chances to communicate ahead of time, too, that's always great.
And just so you know, I do work with Dr. Valani on the calendar because we will even change our, I work with her because she'll bring to my attention, she'll call me and say, it doesn't work out the way you have your conferences. We will switch conferences with her. So I do work with her to try and coordinate. But our contract language does provide more early dismissal days, I will say, than I haven't read your contract, but I'm going to make that assumption. So that is some of the difficulty that we deal with.
Yeah, I mean, I know, there's all sorts of differences.
So I sat down with the contract today, and I'm working with Dr. Lehman to see what's actually written in the contract that I must follow, and then some of the things that we don't have to, making sure that we still have the professional development and. And then some of the things that we don't have to, making sure that we still have the professional development and trying to meet everybody's needs. I want to thank Ms. DuPain, she did make a comment to me when I walked in and she said, Jerry can't make everybody happy. We are really trying very hard to be respectful of everybody's choices, you know, whether or not that week in November works. It would be fabulous if we could just get the last two schools not to have voting and then we'd have three days of continuous instruction. So we're, we're really going to try, but we're going to, we're going to take another shot at it and take some more time to really look at it and listening to some of the opinions that I received. But ultimately, the decision, we, we present it for approval, it is the recommendation of the superintendent, and then the board makes the decision through their voice of a yes or no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Piero, for bringing that up, making it clear that it's not me that makes these decisions, but that you bring them to us and we approve or, like you said, disapprove. Anybody else? Okay, then we are going to our second, our third public forum of the night. Any member of the public wishing to speak, you have four minutes to do so. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
Jessica Izzo, Monroe.
A little closer.
Maybe tilt it up.
There you go. Oh, the clock was taken. The lack of communication with parents has led me here to bring awareness to the December 19th bus accident and the ongoing circumstances surrounding it. Kids can be a little wild at the end of the day, but I have watched these kids act with impunity this year, beginning with the first day of school when about 30 of them forced their way off a bus on a dead-end street and stampeded haphazardly up a main road. It was such a spectacle that it was reported on social media. In the following months, they would mock the driver with racial slurs, spray everyone with water and Gatorade, screaming that it was urine and semen. They would throw things, spray colognes, whip seat belts. In October, a boy shouted at a girl to jump out the window and kill herself. And the screaming, I always knew when the afternoon bus arrived, I could hear the screaming from a block away inside my home. The day before the crash, I was told a Stanley thermos was being thrown around, around near the driver. This was their typical behavior. I urge parents to review the related police report. The havoc described in the minutes leading up to the crash is what was referred to by many children as a calm day. Go read what calm was on that bus. There was no control. Though most parents were unaware of what their kids and driver had to endure on a regular basis, few parents were. And we did express our concerns. I called Transportation in October and I emailed school administrators on November 21st detailing the behavior on that bus and asking for help because I was afraid they would cause an accident. We had relief for a day, but nothing stopped them. An investigation by the Bus Safety Division in Trenton revealed zero communication between ABC and the district before the crash. In response, ABC's corrective action plan includes reporting all infractions to the school. So that's why no one raised the alarm that the bus company wasn't reporting these kids. They weren't required to. Weeks after the crash, we switched to a district bus, but our aid was removed the same day. The kids quickly resumed their usual antics unabated until parents reported them to administration. This is what got us into the first crash. So much for updating protocols and operating procedures. Last Monday, I asked what would be done to stop this and if we would get an aid on the bus again. But there was no response as usual. The next day, our kids reported to us that an aid was back, but again, no communication keeps us vigilant. It's frustrating to keep asking for information and getting no response, but that's why I'm here. The whole experience has exposed a larger problem that isn't isolated to our root. Parents and students should not carry the burden of keeping our buses safe. Administrators quickly respond to parent concerns, but there needs to be follow-through to ensure the bus stays in order. And our drivers clearly need more support to do their job safely. It's the same as making the kids wear seat belts after the crash, then slacking off, just to enforce it again last week when there's an issue. There's no consistent oversight. Knowing that the accident was preventable and the cause is ongoing, I can't rest assured and neither can my kids. We don't need your empty assurances. We need a district-wide corrective action plan that bridges the communication gap between buses and schools so the bus contract that is meant to keep everyone safe can actually be enforced. What steps are you taking to get that done? And can you confirm that our aid will be permanent so we can finally feel at ease?
Answer the questions.
This has nothing to do with anticipated litigation. I don't know why we can't get any answers.
It actually has everything to do with anticipated litigation. I'm trying to figure out a way that you can get some answers. So just bear with me for one moment. Thank you.
Thank you. So as, as part of our plan of action moving forward, the aid was placed back on the bus. The aid will remain on the bus for the remainder of the school year in regards to that particular bus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
This will be two-part. First part is this. The last board under Chrissy Skirby broke the law many a times. We had, we, the district spent thousands of dollars to defend a court case where the board illegally appointed a board member. On January 21st, the Commissioner of Education just released another decision that says the superintendent was illegally extended under contract twice in 2022. The Commissioner of Education said that those contracts must be revoted on by the Board of Education. Let me jog your memory. While on those illegal contracts, the superintendent recommended herself for a permanent position that was approved. Then, when the illegal board member was brought on, he was the deciding vote to extend the superintendent's contract to almost two years early. The pattern of unlawfulness out of the last board is just, it's, 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 I don't even know how to describe it, but it continues to unfold. Even with a new board in place, we're finding about all of the illegal acts that the last board did. So my question is, and you can answer it when I get to the next part, when is this board going to follow the Commissioner of Education's decision on January 21st and revote on the two illegal contracts that were given to the superintendent in 2022? And if those contracts don't pass, I have no idea if they will or they will not. Are the members of this public going to be refunded the money for those illegal contracts? I would like to know as a taxpayer. Because in anything in this world, there's a contract and there's a repercussion, a final repercussion. The Department of Education and the Commissioner of Education, the court system just ruled that those contracts given to Chanley under Chrissy Skirby's board leadership were illegal. No different than the illegal board member appointment. You can answer my question after. The second part of this is the transportation. I cannot sit back as a parent who's gone through the same things with my son on the bus and hear silence and see nothing being done because you're afraid of legal action. We don't care about illegal action, legal action. That's going to come when kids get nearly killed on a bus because you don't take action when parents bring it forward. Okay? I don't care. I, as a parent, do not want to see kids killed because you ignore parents when they bring these things forward. It is unexcusable. So you can sit quiet and you can make excuses about legal. We're going to get sued. Yes, you're going to get sued because kids were close to being killed. And if that tree didn't stop that bus, it would have rolled and children could have been killed. So I'll say this, and I'll ask this question to the board right now. There are seven of you here. Who will make a motion at this board mem, at this board meeting tonight to call for an independent investigation where you bring an outside attorney or an outside expert to come in and see what is being done to prevent this moving forward? What is being done to fix what happened? What is being done to make sure that this doesn't happen again? Will any one of you seven board members make that motion? To bring in an outside person to investigate? I'm all ears.
I would bring that motion for an investigation, absolutely.
Your time is up.
Is there an answer on the first part about when you'll vote on the illegal contracts?
Your time is up.
Silence.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Michelle McDonald, Montertown Township. I was here last month and I said what I wanted to say about the bus accident. And now here we are a month later and I still have no answers. So my question today is, as a parent who had two children on that bus, who now come home and say, what's happening? Sometimes we have an aid, sometimes we don't. What's my answer for them? Are these parents, me and all the other parents, going to get some direct communication about what happened and what's being done to fix it?
I cannot discuss the situation, but I will tell you, there will be an aid on that bus for the remainder of the school year.
Okay, but what else is happening about the children that are misbehaving on the bus?
Children that are misbehaved when a code of conduct is infringed upon. We are not at liberty to discuss anybody else's child.
I'm not asking you to discuss anybody else's child.
But I'm letting you know the code of conduct is followed and you would not know because we are not at liberty to discuss other people's children.
All right.
And I apologize for that.
Understood. You're not allowed to discuss other people's children. From what I know, based on what my children tell me, if you're following that code of conduct, these children shouldn't be on the bus anymore.
I'm just going to make a blanket, I'm just going to make a general statement in general. Removal from bus, from a bus comes with various different infractions. There are other forms of consequences, which could be suspension, after-school detention. And everything is specific to the child. So although I totally respect what your kids say, and I'm sure a lot of what they say is absolutely true, they would, and I mean that sincerely, I do, because I'm a mother too. But I will let you know that detailed records are being kept and appropriate consequences are given when appropriate. And I, I can't discuss any of these specifics.
Okay, and you can't tell me whether there will be any communication to the parents? The parents, not, not the township as a whole. The parents who were affected by this, my children who come home and say, oh, the bus driver's speeding because they're scared. Of course they're scared. Will there ever be any communication to the parents?
So the communication to the parents is the same communication from any bus?
No, 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 no.
I don't understand what you just said. The bus driver's speeding?
I, I, yes, the bus driver's speeding, and I've emailed about that with no response. So what I need to know is, will the parents ever be emailed about, or, or phone called or whatever, about what happened on December 19th?
At this time, I, I have to...
Because it's been months with nothing. Okay.
So according to the principal of the school, I called and spoke with the parents of the children that were taken to the hospital. I called and spoke to the...
Yeah, there were children who went to the hospital after that first day, just so you know.
And that's correct. And I wasn't informed of that, but I will let you know that according to the principal, every parent received a phone call from the principal or the assistant principal or the school counselor because we also asked that every child be called down on a regular basis to speak with the counselors regarding how they felt, if they were upset and so forth.
I, and I have no problem with the fact that, that they were asked how they felt and knew that they could speak to somebody if they were having problems with it. That's a whole other issue that they were spoken to though about the accident and what caused it without their parents being there. That's a whole separate issue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could I make a comment? If I understood her, I believe she was at the last meeting and said that she never received any phone call in reference to the accident?
I don't...
I don't know if...
Yeah, if there's any, if there's nobody else wishing to speak, we're going to close the public forum. Is anybody else wishing to speak? Then we will close the public forum. There is no second closed session, so we move on to our next scheduled Board of Education meeting, which is March 17th, 2025. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.